Good evening and welcome to tonight's council of the whole meeting. We are calling the meeting to order. It is 5:33. Roll call, please.
Councillor Carrasco.
Present.
Councillor Clemens.
Present.
Councillor Estrada.
Present.
Councillor Manna.
Present.
Councillor Moriarty.
Present.
Councillor Palaquin.
Present.
Councillor Steves.
Present.
Councillor Viento.
Present.
Councillor Vecchia.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Just as a brief overview of tonight's interview process, we will have three different candidates for town manager that will come in tonight. They will each be allotted about one hour in order to be asked questions, offer their own statements, and so forth. Each councillor, as agreed to by consensus earlier this week at the Monday night council meeting, each councillor has been provided with a couple of questions that were deemed appropriate through numerous different reasons, and they will choose one of those two questions per round. If we have the time, we will go through two rounds, but that may be ambitious to try and get through both rounds based on the time constraints. And each councillor has also been given, upon some recommendation of councillors, some interview evaluation forms. These ones happen to be produced by the Illinois City County Management Association specifically for town and city manager interviews. And this is just a good way to kind of help track different qualities and abilities and thoughts as we proceed throughout the evening. Does anybody have any questions as far as the overview?
I don't have them.
You don't have one of them?
I don't have the interview form.
You should have it in your pile of papers. There are three. They're all stable.
Thanks.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions at this point? Okay. Seeing none, we'll proceed with the town manager interviews. And to introduce our first candidate, I would like to introduce Terry Colagnesi from the Town Manager Search Committee.
Welcome to probably the most important part of your job as members of the town council, which is recruiting a new town manager. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to David Knappick from the town of Westfield.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you to the town council and the search committee for inviting me here tonight. Just a slight correction, first name, Daniel?
What did I say? I'm sorry.
Terry, bet you David. That's okay.
Sorry. So we will begin, we will start with councillor Steves, and we will just progress along that corridor.
Hi, Mr. Knappick. Thank you for coming to our town, first of all.
Certainly.
Can you hear me clearly?
I can just a little bit hear you.
Okay. First of all, I said thank you for coming to our town and for participating in this process. One of the things that I think is important is that our town is one of Massachusetts' highest asthma and teen pregnancy rates, has other issues regarding cancer, MS, autism, lead paint poisoning, and a variety of other issues. What experience do you have in addressing public health concerns and the pollution often linked to them, and in pushing state and federal government to get on the ball with cleaning up contaminated sites?
For most of my career in private industry, I worked in the environmental field as a consultant, often dealing with cases of air pollution, worker safety, and lead paint poisoning. So over the years, going back to the late 1980s, worked with many state public health offices to work with strategies for towns, to come up with educational materials, training events, and different methodologies and techniques to address various environmental stressors, if you will, in the population. Certainly, in my role as mayor of the city of Westfield, we work closely with our public health infrastructure in our local hospital to ensure that the city applies its resources appropriately to address those issues that are in front of it related to the different topics that you mentioned.
What do you mean by applying resources appropriately, in what sense?
Well, you know, number one, it'd be, well, working and promoting a good, healthy message, ensuring that when projects do come to town, that they're vetted out and evaluated for their impacts on the environment. And certainly, all my years on the city council, one of my roles there was to be more of the type of expert, if you will, on issues that came in front of the city related to the health and environment, because that was my background for years in private industry. So it was just kind of a natural fit to come to the office like that and work with the school nurse apparatus and the city nurse apparatus to ensure that the city is having wellness programs and doing those various activities that we can do to promote a good, healthy lifestyle.
So did you see any, can you tell us a little bit about what, some of the things that you actually implemented and how it changed things?
Well, for us, a lot of our concerns around public health related to immigrant refugee populations. And so we are a very large resettlement community. So one of the things that was quite a concern amongst the folks in the city were the, what I would call, the health status of the refugee population coming to town. So what I did is, we called together the state of Massachusetts Public Health Department, the resettlement services organization, our public health infrastructure at the city, the hospital, in-town noble hospital, caring health centers, which was the identified health clinic, if you will, for the refugees, put them together in a room, talked about the different issues that are in front of the refugees as they come to town, and then put together a plan where the city would ensure that the first point of contact health apparatus was followed through. So we set up the city hall, among other things, a tuberculosis screening center with our public health nurses, and we also pressed the health community that cared for the refugees to bring into town a primary care physician, so that the families that were being resettled didn't have to go to Springfield for their care. And that was all at my own initiative.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Vecchia.
Hi, my name is Al Vecchia. Nice to meet you. There are many different opinions and perspectives in our community, and they often manifest in passionate ways. Saying that, I have an article here, I'm sure that you're very familiar with, and it states that the judge stated that you violated civil rights, and I know what it says. Can you explain this to me?
Right. So my background, like I said, is 20 years in public safety. So we were just recovering from the October snowstorm at the time, and that particular area is a very heavily traveled thoroughfare. We'd had three pedestrian fatalities within a short period of time. We were, that night of the order, we're going to have hundreds of kids in the area come out on the street for a trick-or-treating event. So as I came into the street and I looked across down the road, there was maybe upwards of nine to 12 campaign and commercial realtor signs in the right-of-way. Having been part of the city ordinance team years ago, you can't put signs in the right-of-way. We didn't have an apparatus or an infrastructure to sit there and issue an order and then have it dealt with tomorrow or the next day. So my order to the town city public works director was if they're in the right-of-way, all the signs come down. And in the end, there were no signs that were taken down that were on private property. But this is a situation that is, you know, at no cost to the plaintiffs, even in the early stage of the investigation, they were told it was a legitimate public safety order. They pursued the case with the ACLU, and in the end, I chose not to go to trial with the case, even though we had demonstrated that both the political signs and the realtor signs were both ordered taken down and were taken down. It becomes one of those situations where it's time to move on. At a certain point, that lawsuit had dragged on for about two years.
So you disagree with the judge's ruling, number one, and number two, it did cost your city, it's the city, right, did cost your city $53,000 because of this ruling?
Well, you know, if every public official, and I was a member of a city council for years, we were sued with some regularity by plaintiffs on a lot of different issues, land use issues, special permit issues. As a mayor of a city, you're named frequently in lawsuits. As a member of the school committee, I've been named in a number of lawsuits in your capacity. Thankfully, the statutes are such that they indemnify public servants, or it would be great peril for any public servant to serve in a capacity. And in this particular case, that situation occurs to police chiefs quite frequently across the Commonwealth. It occurs to zoning officials and building inspectors. I just happened to be the one that saw it that day. So if you notice that the judge's order was an unintentional violation, and it was, the city attorney had investigated, and I was indemnified from the beginning because there was no political activity associated with that.
Thank you very much for your answer.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Vando.
Welcome, Mr. Knappick. What has been the most difficult situation you faced in your professional career, and how did you handle the situation?
Well, I think, like, for all of us in public service, the times that we've been serving in have been incredibly difficult. This is the worst economy since the Great Depression, and some would say it's even worse than that. And continuously meeting the demands of public service and delivering a public service apparatus in this time is very difficult. So as part of six consecutive years of preparing a budget, on two occasions, my first budget in fiscal 2011, and this latest budget, we've had to make very tough decisions related to personnel. And in those cases, every single one of those types of decisions can come with a loss of jobs. And that makes it very difficult, because at the end of the day, particularly when you're the mayor, you have to run the city and do it in such a fashion, and the public, frankly, doesn't really care about our financial situation. They just want their services delivered. They want their potholes fixed. They want their schools to be safe, clean, and they want the, you know, the city to be well-run. And it's our job as elected public officials to ensure that there are enough resources still to do that. So it's been a challenging issue in the last six years to continue to meet that mandate and keep the city moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knappick, as a manager, one's success is often tied to how one manages conflict within your own team. What do you know about past or current conflicts within the town of Southbridge, and what experiences have you had successfully resolving such conflicts in the past, specifically?
Well, specifically in Southbridge, I get the sense from just some newspaper articles that I've read in the visioning report that, you know, there's a couple of different issues that are at play. One is with the public in a sense of, I guess, a certain amount of frustration and inability to see the promised land, if you will. I commend you for commissioning a very bold visioning plan for 2030, and some of the commentary that was in there was very similar to what I had heard over the years in my own city. And, you know, and frankly, in government, things take a long time to occur, and the ball gets moved very slowly over the course of time. But the citizenry needs to see, you know, that the elected officials in the administration are working in their best interest. So I do appreciate and understand that there's a significant school issue here in Southbridge. I have a teaching background. I'm a licensed Connecticut, Massachusetts teacher. I come from a family of teachers. I'm a chairman of the school board in Westfield. I was, had the pleasure of, while I've been in office, to select a superintendent that was given a mandate. Our school district was underperforming substantially. Having been born and raised in that community, I knew that it could do much better. And we tasked a brand-new superintendent from California to come to town, and, you know, she just handed me the latest, some of the latest literacy data from K through five in our elementary population. And I'm very pleased to say, all these years later, with the intervention programs and the strategy she's deployed, we've turned a corner. And our vocational technical high school is moving from level three to level two, and likely within 18 months to 24 months, it'll be level one. So, you know, I'm appreciative of the situation here in town. At the level that you're at, there's a certain sense of urgency. You know, one of the things that I've always made the cornerstone of my administration is the best thing we can do as elected officials is support our schools, because that's what you build a community around. And Southbridge, frankly, is losing population, and it's anemic growth to 2030. And the way you're going to rebuild your community is to make a strong, solid school in school administration. And that wasn't lost on me, that in my own community, we had a revolving door of principals in many of the buildings. We had three superintendents in five years, four mayors in three years. And one of the things I did when I came to office was provide stability, guidance, and leadership, and, you know, accepted no other excuse except to turn the ship around. So, you know, like I said, I'm pleased to say that we've made great progress in the last six years.
Thank you. Councillor Carrasco.
Yes, Mr. Knappick, good to see you again. Please describe a situation where you have had to step in, step up, and lead a controversial issue.
How about a dramatic issue like the natural disasters of 2011, including the tornado and the October snowstorm? You name it. I had five federally declared natural disasters in my city, and I'm very pleased to say that we financed them all out of our own pocket. We didn't have to borrow any money from any banks or the government, other than FEMA reimbursements. And, you know, what I would say is that each one of those events, a tropical storm, a tornado, October snowstorm, and tremendous snows of the winter of 2011, all had different challenges on different topics. And, you know, our city was recognized as a leader by Massachusetts Emergency Management as coming through that with a good outcome and also a very strong emergency management approach. I mean, that would be, not a lot of controversy, other than the fact that, you know, the morning of the snowstorm, I woke up and there was about 17,000 households without power. That's a problem, for sure. So we were able to constitute our emergency management effort and get the town and the city back up and running within three days or thereabouts. It involved a lot of different agency cooperation, including public shelters and National Guard emphasis and other agencies from outside the jurisdiction. So, you know, we did very well through that. I would not want to wish that, by the way, on anybody. I know you had the tail end of the tornado out here. I took a ride up to the airport, and, you know, you can't prepare for something like that. You know, you have plans in place, but you really don't know until that morning or that day that something like that happens, how well you're going to do. And, like I said, I'm very pleased to say that with my professional background, for many years being in industrial plant safety, I had a good background in emergency management, and we had a good team, and we came through it much stronger.
Thank you. Councillor Clemens.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Knappick.
Good evening.
Janice Clemens, six-year councillor. Town boards and committees and citizens groups are sometimes not unanimous on the direction the town should take. Here in Southbridge, we have no small shortage of controversy and divisive topics, as you may have researched us. How do you manage in a context where there's a majority on an issue, but nevertheless, there is a strong minority view on a committee or a board?
Yeah, it's a good question. You know, one of the things that I prided myself when I sat on the city council was the ability to tackle controversial or difficult issues, reach compromise. And sometimes with folks, you have to come to the realization that, you know, you can't agree 100% of the time, but in the end, you can't make it personal either. Clearly, if it's a situation where there's a majority vote that's involved in it, and the vote is such that the majority makes the rule, you've got to learn to bring the pieces back together and get everybody going back on the same direction. And certainly, running three mayoral campaigns, two of which had opposition, including one in which I beat an incumbent, you know, you realize at the ballot box, not everybody supported you. But in the end, you're everybody's mayor. And it's blind to party affiliation, personal animus, or anything like that. You've got a job to do, you've sworn an oath of office, and you've got to discharge your duties to the best of your ability. The town manager takes the direction from the town council, and, you know, if the town council issues a majority order, well, then that's what you've got to do. You know, you can certainly, I think, you know, sometimes opposition or discourse is shunned, but I think it's a sign of a healthy community when you have populations come in and feel like they can air those things out. Some of the problems or challenges that sometimes happens is people walk away and they take it too personal. And you've got to really remember that. At the end of the day, you're doing the taxpayers' business, and it shouldn't be personal. Everybody just has a different viewpoint sometimes. And if we're going to heal, we've got to heal together, and we've got to move the community in the direction that the majority says that it should go. But you've got to still be sensitive to those folks that are on the other side. There's no question about that.
If I may. We are, we have a charter. We are a town run like a city, and are you familiar with our charter? Have you had a chance to?
I glanced at some material. I'm very intrigued with the town that's run like a city. It's, I think in many ways, I always say I loved being on the city council. But, you know, in the end, there was only so much you could do, and you certainly weren't the managers of the entity. Even when you're the town council and the manager works for you, I understand that certain frustrations that can happen about that. But I think in the end, the system or the setup that you have, it makes better reasonable sense in the long run to getting things accomplished. Some of the smaller towns that have town meetings or appointed delegates, you can have a very passionate issue, come to the floor, stack the room with a viewpoint, and get a vote that might not be in the best interest. And certainly, one of the things you look at in town governments is the debate that divides communities typically around spending with schools. And of course, the financial situation is very difficult with all cities and towns. But I think at the end of the day, what happens in a type of town government that has town meeting, it can get very cumbersome, slow, and be wasteful of resources. So I think this setup that you have preferred, and it was validated with your referendum recently, is a very good choice, moving forward. As you move towards city status down the line, I think you're very well set up to do that.
Thank you.
Councillor Estrada.
Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Knappick.
Good evening.
Councillor Estrada. What do you think you bring this job that the other might not?
That's a really good question, you know. So when I looked at your prospectus as to the challenges in front of your community that the Collins Center put together, and then I look at your visioning program that was put together a couple of years ago, I see a lot of similarities between my community and your community. My community being in 2009, when I decided to run for mayor. Many of the same themes were present throughout. The schools could do better. We could do better in our business outreach. We could do better downtown. We could do better in recreation. So I sat for, well, and if I back it up, if I go back to 2001, I'm a big believer in a plan, a plan forward. So I sat with the mayor at the time. I had just sold a business. I had some time on my hands, and I wanted to know what was in front of my city, because it didn't seem like it was moving anywhere, and I was starting to get frustrated. And I saw he shared with me the plan for the future, and it had all these unbelievable things that I thought, geez, even if we were halfway successful, this is going to be a fabulous place to raise a family. There's a lot of great amenities, big transportation improvements. And I just simply asked the mayor, I said, "What do you need for help from me as a citizen?" And he says, "I need somebody on the city council that shares the vision." So I ran, and I won. And I took the next eight years and I supported the vision. I never thought in a, you know, thousand years that I was going to be the person that would step up in 2009, when the government was stumbling again and going down with a bad economy, and the mayor was stuck, unable to move the town, the city forward. I didn't think I was going to be that person. I had a great business. And, but, you know, there's certain points in time. You all have felt the desire to serve your community elected office, and that's pretty rare in a community. And so for me, I reached that point where I saw the plan, I knew what it was, I believed in it, and I knew I could execute it. And I sit back six years later, we brought every project over the finish line, including a conversation I had with the lieutenant governor today that gave me another $1.7 million for downtown redevelopment that I was short on, that I needed to further funds for a transit project. So you get that way by having the plan, by staying at the table, developing relationships with your federal and state partners, and whether it's elected service, which I've done a great job in over the years, or bureaucrats, by developing these relationships. And your plan for the future, to get to where you want to go, you're going to need your federal and state partners. And as a mayor, there's only like 41 mayors in the Commonwealth. It's a pretty rare position. Unlike a town manager, somebody that's had experience as town manager, town administrator, they don't understand the state infrastructure. I have a great relationship with the governor, lieutenant governor, I can call him up anytime. And that was the same with Governor Patrick and Lieutenant Governor Murray before, because of the relationships I've built over the years and the position as councillor and then as mayor. And all of these agencies, whether it's at the federal level or at the state level, they respond through relationships. So, you know, my city, in six years garnered well over $100 million of federal and state funds for these projects. Three park improvement projects, huge transportation projects, you name it, we got it. And we're actually finishing off a big rail trail project through town. It'll be done in 2017. We got notified of another $6.8 million to finish that off because of the aggressive approach we took to making sure the vision came over the finish line. Thank you.
Councillor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Ms. Duck.
Good evening.
Knappick?
Knappick.
Okay.
Yeah.
Monique Manna. Some people have observed that there are two kinds of town managers. Those that are principally managers and stewards of the organization, and those that play a civic leadership role, as well as the role of organizational leader. What kind of leader are you?
Yeah, that's a great question. So if you were telling me tonight that your town is, we're just good the way we are, we just need somebody to keep the chair warm and move some papers around, I'm not your guy. And I get the sense from what I read in the paper and from talking to the search committee and from reading the visioning report, you have a lot of desires and dreams in this community. You need somebody that knows how to get that done. You need somebody that can make the connection to the various population groups within the community, the business community. I spent 20 years in business development, managed two startup businesses, did very successfully there. You need somebody that has that ability to bring your vision across the finish line. And that's what attracted me to the job here in Southbridge, is the challenge that's in front of you. I enjoy a challenge. It's not by mistake or accident that I gravitated towards business startups and getting them off the ground. And the same thing in my office as mayor, there was a challenge in my community, and I felt I was the one that knew how to get it done. And that's what's attracted me to this evening here tonight, that you've got some great plans, and you've got some great infrastructure, some great bones in this town, you just need somebody to help you get there. And I'm that person.
Thank you.
Councillor Palaquin.
Thank you. Many want a town manager with new ideas and lots of energy. How do you meet those requirements?
Well, when you're a mayor, you're 24/7, 365, with a lot of energy, because you've got to keep everything moving forward. So, you know, that's one of those things. I was self-employed, a self-starter for years, going back many years ago, and then I was, you know, an owner in a very entrepreneurial-type company before I became mayor. And so that's one of those things where that's just my personality. I only know one speed 110%. And we got, you know, when I came to the office of mayor, I laid out six or five or six goals, and I figured we'd get them over the finish line in four years, based on the way we work. It took six. I didn't realize the economy was going to be so bad for as long as it has been. But, you know, I look back now, and I'm, you know, people say, "Well, why are you leaving?" And I say, "Well, because I did everything I said I was going to do in 2009. I don't need to make more work. I've completed my vision for where I needed to go." And that's the way I would approach the job. You have a great blueprint on where you want to go, and it needs to get going. And I would give that 110%, 365, to help you get to where you want to go in this community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councillor Steves.
Even though our town has a balanced budget, the current environment is placing pressure on our town, just like it is in Westfield and anywhere else. What in your experience prepares you to manage in this kind of environment, and how do you see yourself being able to create ways to get new sources of funding?
Sure. You know, so first of all, you've got to take a look, and you can't take anything off the table. So I looked at everything in the city of Westfield as a potential economic asset, whether it was putting solar panels up on the landfill, which we did with Citizens Energy Corporation that garnered a lot of money for us every year and took care of the landfill cap, to something like a cost-saving benefit of single-stream recycling that this year's going to save us $200,000 in our budget, that's with two per-ton bulk increases for transportation. So it was a matter of drawing together the stakeholders that have care and custody of the taxpayers' money, and prospecting out from them ideas twofold. One is for cost savings and efficiencies. I'm a big fan of regionalization. We did a lot of consolidation in Westfield. We consolidated a lot of departments, including many school functions, and brought them under the city umbrella. And then you have to look at all of those taxpayers, particularly on the business side, what can you do more to enhance their ability to grow, expand, and then attract? Because, you know, it's through new growth and certainly expansion of your pre-existing businesses that you're going to be able to weather the storm, if you will, until the state figures out its own problems with its local aid funding formula. So it's really a broad-based approach on that, but looking at everything here as a potential avenue for efficiency or as an asset to generate some income somehow.
To follow up on that, you mentioned you're putting solar on your landfill.
Yeah.
Do you actually have experience in dealing with active landfills? Because we do have one.
Yes.
And we have issues with the finances right now, because the MEPA just decided they weren't going to give them away.
Right. So we actually, many years ago, we had a, we purchased for many millions of dollars[1756.41] So we actually, many years ago, we purchased for many millions of dollars a site, and then the DEP closed it down. They wouldn't let it reopen. So we capped our own landfill. And so I was on the council shortly after the cap legislation went through, and then we put a methane generator out there. And we tried to prospect out methane for a while, and it had a co-located natural gas line to it. And then we got to the point now, though, that when the market for solar panels really promotes panel locations on brownfields and landfill tops, it was a natural for us. We had a high-tension power line going through there, a co-generator plant to begin with. And so we went to two different RFPs, and the solar farm that Citizens Energy built is providing the city with about $75,000 to $85,000 per year in a lease. The city buys the power, and it's a 17-year guaranteed supply, and then they take care of 10 acres of the landfill cap for us. And we also turned the landfill into a transfer station, and a landscape, refuge landscape, and a hazmat location. So we were able to do an awful lot with a site that would normally be a huge liability to you.
And also, do you have experience dealing with municipal energy? Either creating it, or running it, or...
Yeah. So Westfield has participated in the Commonwealth's Energy Management Performance Program, and our partner, Siemens Energy. And with Siemens, we've been investigating methane digestion from our wastewater treatment facility, and a variety of other different avenues of generating power, including with our electric and gas company, a natural gas generation station as well for vehicles. And I'm very excited about the idea of citing a digester, a municipal solid waste digester, in the location that we could generate both steam and electric power through methane gas generation. So these things take many years, but the cost analysis that was done, we would save money. We're spending over half a million dollars a year getting rid of our sludge, and we could be able to treat it on our own, make some money, and then open it up on a regional basis. I think you need communities that think entrepreneurial and are the first one out there, and then they can regionalize it and actually take a huge liability and make it a positive. There's not a lot of entrepreneurial thinking, though, in municipal and state government. That's unfortunate a problem.
Thank you. Counselor Vecchia.
Thank you. Like most municipalities, money is tight. And for instance, we have a landfill, a dump, and it's going to be running out, and we get like $2.5 million a year. We're not going to have that money. So that's just one example. But what in your experience provides evidence that you can play a leadership role in the financial planning process?
Well, so when I came in office, in the last six years during the worst economy since the Great Depression, we've been able to invest $31 million into our building infrastructure, make it more economical, in air models of energy efficiency. But at the same time, I raised the city's bond rating two notches from Moody's and Standard and Poor's. Our building infrastructure has never been in better condition, and we have more money in the bank than we ever had before. So you know, that's the level of financial acumen I brought to my city. My city was struggling. When I was on the council for many years, we didn't have a nickel in our stabilization account. Today, it's 6.5 million, and almost $3 million in free cash. And I'm always mindful of that as it relates to when you do a loan offering, you need to be mindful of your bond rating. So that was first on my mind, is to, and by the way, we didn't tax the 2.5%. Four out of my five budgets, we, actually, last year's budget was 1.25% levy increase. So I've been able to put money in the bank, raise the bond rating, and not maximum tax to citizenry, and still deliver services and improve the school district performance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Vandal.
How would you describe your style in relation to the media and citizens?
Yeah, so on the media, I have a good relationship with the media. You know, as a mayor, you're always asked for a soundbite, a quote, you know, they are attracted to you because you're the newsmaker in your community, so that's kind of a natural thing. I have a TV show, a radio show I do weekly, a TV show I do monthly. I write a lot of newsletter, a monthly newsletter, columns. So I try to communicate. We had a lot of challenges in my community. One of the things I wanted to make sure is that, at every opportunity I had to get in front of a microphone or a camera, I told people about these challenges. Because we were going to spend a lot of money in our town, and our city is very conservative. And they, I didn't know when I took office that almost every building in the city, school, and municipal infrastructure was in a serious state of decay. My own city hall needed $13 million federally-registered national historic building to be saved. It almost, the rooftop almost collapsed. I didn't know that when I took office. So when you're getting ready to spend an enormous sum of money that, in a very difficult time, you have to have a good message, and you have to convince people, this is, there's no other alternative. As it relates to the townspeople, you know, I would go out, we have, you know, a number of events all the time, and award meetings, I would hold those, and certainly in the office, always open, very approachable, whether it was on a ball field, frequently people would approach you at wakes and funerals, but hey, that's okay because you're the people's representative, and they, you know, they see you and they want to talk to you. So it's letting them know it's okay to come talk to you at any time, because you know, they're paying you. And if they've got time right now, and even if I'm with my family, that's their time. And they want to be able to have a conversation with you, and I'm open to that. And that's kind of been my style throughout my time in all 14 years of public office, is that, hey, if it's on your mind, it's important to you, it's important to me.
Thank you.
So this one has a couple quotes. So which of these two quotes do you agree with more? The first is Thomas Jefferson, "Delay is preferable to error." The other is from William Shakespeare, "That defer no time, delays have dangerous ends."
Well, when you can go up to the third floor of your city hall building and see the main drag out in front through the broken bricks because the steel or the wood trusses have rotted away, there's no more time for delay. You've got to come up with a financial plan, or we could have killed somebody in that building. So you know, after seeing what I've seen, is that, you know, you have to prioritize your decisions based on what you've got in front of you. But certainly, I would probably tend to be more like William Shakespeare than the Thomas Jefferson quote, so.
Okay. Counselor Carrasco is going to...
As Ben in an interview prior with Mr. Knappik, I will defer another question to Counselor Clements because we're running out of time.
Thank you. Town boards, committee, excuse me. A municipality is a direct-service organization. Residents make judgments about their town based on the services they receive. Here in Southbridge, we have full-time fire, full-time police. We have a wonderful library with great operational hours to be able to let the citizens come in and do what they need to do there. And we currently, of course, have free trash pickup, but that will run out as our funding and our landfill situation changes over the next couple of years, which will be a challenge. What have you done to improve services and the perception of town services? I know we've heard a little bit. Is there anything specific?
Well, you know, one of them is single-stream recycling. You know, I had heard over the years the complaints of multiple bins and all that kind of stuff. And even before that, we moved a few years back to semi-automated trash collection, to get barrels off the street. They were unsightly, but they were a big workers' comp issue to our labor, and we were having trouble staffing the trucks. So that was the first migration towards, you know, semi-automation about seven years ago. But without question, that matured itself to, is there a better way to collect trash? But most importantly, is there a better way, an easier way, to pick up recycling? Because if you make it easy, there'll be more. And so we rolled out single-stream with automated trucks this January. You couldn't have asked for a worse rollout, with the worst winter imaginable. I mean, it was a politician's nightmare. But you know what? It worked like a charm. And we're saving a tremendous amount of money. $200,000 was the projection. We hit that projection. Our recyclable tonnage is way up. And so, you know, that's a huge win for the taxpayers. The other one, we had a big problem when I came in office for animal control. We were kicked out of the shelter that was housing our animals. We have a large population, I think over 5,000 licensed dogs, so we have a number of animals at large. It was important to me to solve that problem. So I went out, constituted a shelter. Now it's regional with West Springfield, Agawam, East Hampton, Southampton, and some of the hill towns around us. And Westfield still runs it. But it was important to, you know, take care of that need in the citizenry, and you know, people love their animals. They love animals more than they love people sometimes. And you know, and even when we had the natural disasters, I always made sure that we took care of the animals in the apartments and the houses, and we even had a nice vehicle to grab them and bring them into the shelter because, you know, that's what wins you favor with the population. But it's also doing the right thing. And the last part about it is prompt response. I'm a huge believer in customer service. I mean, in private business, you're not anywhere without your customers. And if you don't get back to them in a timely fashion, that's a problem. So when I came in office, I made statistical analysis of the delivery of the services that we do a priority. And we brought in the Collins Center. We did a lot of analysis on a lot of different things. But one of the things I didn't want to do anymore was to do it the old-fashioned way, which is somebody makes a call, and it gets into Neverland World, and nobody ever acts on it. So through the website, they can file their work order complaint, follow it through. And then we're at the point now where we're at continuous improvement. So what used to take us maybe two weeks before we set goals on an annual basis, let's get the response time quicker, quicker, quicker. And that's what people appreciate, that they're being heard and that they're being taken care of. Typically, government hides behind excuses like, well, we didn't have enough money, we don't have enough people. Well, that's not, that wasn't the way I came into office. I've always been a big fan that good customer service is not something that costs you a lot of money. It's something that, you know, frankly, in public service, sometimes it's hard to find, with the professional bureaucracy being what it is. But sometimes people lose sight of that. Taxpayers want some service, and like I said before, they don't particularly care about our financial situation. They want it done, and they want it done in a timely fashion.
And just your philosophy, then, of customer service and such, and implementing that type of structure, how well has it been received in your, within those you oversee?
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you, the single-stream recycling and the animal shelter, those are an enormous popularity situation. And when you get folks grabbing you on the street who are really skeptical of, you know, we took a 96-gallon container that they used to throw their trash in, dropped it to 65 for trash, and made the 96 the recyclable, and they were all skeptical about it, and now they're embracing it four months later. And that's a big win. You know, but I explained to them, I'm like, "Look, we typically don't reinvent the wheel in government. We go to look at what other communities do, and if it's successful, and it makes sense for our community, we'll work to learn about it, and we'll deploy it here." And for that, there was a couple of other community models we looked at, and it's true to those folks' words. It's a great program, and it worked like a charm in my city.
I was actually referring to the buy-in from your staff.
Oh, my staff?
In terms of your customer philosophy.
Well, that's, you know, it's interesting.
Did you get buy-in from your staff?
Yeah.
Your management style, you know?
You know, in our town, in our city government, it's a city that didn't want to lose its town structure. So the mayor has very little authority. Almost nobody reports to the mayor. I don't appoint hardly anybody. But they, when you come into office, you set the tone and the message, and you just let them know that this is the expectation. We take our orders from the taxpayers, and in this case, you take your orders from the town council. We're here to do a job, and that's what you've got to do. And you know, and one of the things that I think the staff appreciated the most is I was consistent with the message. I was, I treated people consistently and fairly. And if there were things I could do to incentivize staff, or be able to provide professional learning opportunities for them, they recognized that, and they responded to that. It's not too often in a form of government with a mayor that you get that kind of professional development, because it's like a revolving door. Most mayors last one or two terms, and they're done. And so I was the first one to really embrace that message for them, and make working for the city of Westfield a good career potential for them.
Truly noted. I just, not a question, but there's a, there needs to be a line between the employee, you are the administrator, oversees the employees.
No question.
And where the council and that crosses should not, you know, there should be no oversteps.
Right.
So I just make a point of saying that.
Sure.
It's a little different than the mayor and the...
Understood.
Okay, thanks.
We should have time for about one more question, I believe. Counselor Strada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what do you to do, prepare for tonight for interview?
What did I do to prepare? Is that the question?
Yeah.
So I read the visioning report. I read your at-a-glance report from the Mass DOR. I read your financial report that's available from the Collins Center, and I read the Collins Center perspective. I read the blogs, the newspaper articles. I clipped onto a TV segment from a recent meeting. I did a lot to prepare for tonight. Thank you.
And with that, we've talked to you for about 45 minutes and thrown some questions at you. In respect to everybody's time, I'm going to request that counselors be brief if they respond to this. But we've hit you with a lot of questions, so it's only fair that before we close, we ask if you have any questions for town council.
Well, I guess the question that I would ask the town council would be, in your own individual opinion, and I think we did this in the selection, I just kind of went around the room, and what was the singular trait in the manager's position that you were particularly looking to fill? And that lets the manager candidate know where your desire lines... I get the sense from some of the questioning lines where some folks' desires are, but if I could ask each individual, what was the most particular characteristic that you were looking to achieve in the search?
Sure, and we just request that we be cognizant of time. Counselor Steves.
For me, I would really, I really want to see somebody that is, that focuses on the long term, really takes what we have and can tie it into the region and better prepare our community over the long haul. We focus more on like one-year budget cycles, and that's not nearly enough for a lot of the issues we face.
Counselor Vecia.
I, we have an economic development department, but we haven't had any new businesses come into town in years. I mean, big businesses where we could get a tax base out of. So that's my biggest thing, the manager comes in, and I like to see some new business, anchor stores, factories, whatever, to raise the tax base. Because I think that's where we're going to get our money, part of it, most of it, so.
Counselor Vandal.
Could you repeat that question?
What characteristic in the town manager was the one that was most important to you that you were looking for in the candidates?
Couldn't hear a thing. Could you say it a little louder?
What characteristic in the town manager were you looking to have that was important to you?
One, like our first one years ago, Florence Chandler, you know, she held them to the fort. Thank you.
Okay.
I think you've heard ours.
Sure.
I don't know if you want ours again or not, but what I think we can do is defer to these counselors first, and then, if we have time, we'll come back to it.
I'm looking for a strong manager, one who embraces the charter and his duties, or her duties and rights, in this case, his duties, and one who's not afraid to perhaps go against the grain a bit for the interest of the community, taking policy direction from council, but being able to lead and manage the day-to-day operations of this community. Don't want to fall into a different type of pattern that has happened in the past. I want to see us to continue to move forward the way we have been making some strides. And I'm looking for a manager who's going to manage. That's what we're hiring somebody for. So yes, we have a lot of obstacles and things in the way, but in order to make everything meld together and work together, we need a manager who's going to do that for us, and one who's not, like I said, afraid to stand up and do what's best for the community at large, not just to satisfy nine counselors.
Counselor Strada.
My point, Mr. Knappik, I look for in the new town manager, one strong man, and working 50% management, the other 50% working social service. Not all time working. The big responsibility, the town manager, is all series, not only in one, only town hall. Now, my point is 50% working revision and management, but the other 50% working the social program, social service.
Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking for a strong town manager also, one with a backbone, one who won't back down, one with knowledge of our charter, our bylaws, and the Mass General laws, one with knowledge in the budget, business management, and one who brings good, like you said, customer service to the community with an open-door policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Powell?
If I had to pick, say, two things, I would say I'd want to find somebody who's a really good bridge builder. We have a lot of diverse constituencies in this town who want a lot of different things. And it can be hard to bridge those gaps sometimes, particularly in Southbridge, where we have a history of being contentious with each other. Somebody who can lead the way in terms of decorum at public meetings, somebody who can be available and accessible both to citizens and the council members. I think it's really important. I worked under a town manager who never gave me his cellphone number, and I thought that was inappropriate. You should be able to call the town manager whenever you need something. And just somebody who's gonna have a strong vision to lead us to where we want to be in 2030.
Thank you.
Counselor Carrasco?
Similar to whatever we stated. I, I'm looking for a manager that's willing to hold people accountable, department heads, and also use the strength of our community and bring the resources forward. Because I, I truly believe that our community has a lot of greatness. There's great people. But we are divided. And we need somebody that's gonna come in and have energy, somebody that's not gonna sit back and just wait and see. No, we need somebody that's gonna be a go-getter, go, work, and, and, you know, because we have a lot of issues. We have a financial situation that's coming close to an end with money that's, we're relying on. So somebody that's gonna be willing to make some tough decisions, but hold on to them and continue to move forward and develop businesses and develop change. Because we need change. We, we're not, no longer in the era of American optical.
And for myself, I think there's three components. One is balancing the short and the long-term views. I think Counselor Steves and some others have kinda pointed that out. While we have pressing issues at the moment, we also need to be cognizant of unintended consequences of whatever actions we take and, and where that may lead down the road. Somebody who is inclusive. We have a diverse population, an underrepresented population in, in a number of areas. So for me, it's, it's having somebody that's willing to and able to reach out to anybody and everybody in the community to make them feel that they're welcome and that they're heard. And then along those lines, lastly, is, is somebody who can, can really help rally the troops, kinda help with, with a community spirit, and really kind of let people know that they can feel good about their town. We, we certainly have an, an apathy issue at times, or a defeatist attitude at times. And, and I think that it's not productive. So I think having somebody that is able to help bridge that gap and, and move us in that right direction is, is what I would like to see.
Excellent.
Do you have any other questions you'd like to ask? Otherwise, we can invite you to make your closing statement.
No, I'm, I'm good with the questions. I can go right to closing, if you'd like.
Sure.
Yeah. So I appreciate the opportunity to make it this far along the search. I know it's been kind of a tortured path a little bit to get here. But it's quite an honor to be brought forward in front of you. Like I said, I agree with the challenges that you have. There's some long-term issues and some short-term issues. And I think that one of the things that was really important to me back in 2009, when I decided to run for the office of mayor, was to restore that sense of pride in our community. We were a community that had all the wrong economic indicators, all the wrong school indicators going on and a lot. And it starts with leadership at the top. And you, you need to have somebody, and in this particular case, you have a vision laid out. It needs to probably be prioritized and synthesized a bit. But you need to have somebody that can articulate that vision. And that's essentially what a political campaign does. And when you're a mayor, you, you articulate a vision, and you go out and you sell it to the electorate. And I won four elections in office of mayor. I won four elections as a city council. And I, and I can appreciate where you're coming from. I sat in chairs like you did. And I worked on committees and visioning programs and things of that nature that try to make my community better. And sometimes you can be frustrated in that role because you're the legislative branch and you're not the executive in charge of executing that mission. And, and, you know, and, and that is something that, it can be very frustrating when you're in a town form of government. So I would like to think that I can certainly relate to your situation. And I think my track record in Westfield over the last six years demonstrates that in all fronts of the city, we have increased and have improved dramatically, whether it was recreational, our airport is a beacon of efficiency today in modernization and upgrade, the school system, city finances. And, and, you know, and I left behind in, to my successor, a long-term plan to care and maintain the infrastructure that we've improved and we've got in front of us. And none of that was available to me. I had to write the book on my own back in 2010. And along the way, we tackled some very difficult problems. And, and I think I can bring that same experience and the entrepreneurship of 20 years in private business, and that drive to continuously set the goal and, and be a leader and really bring good customer service to the town of Southbridge and get you, the council and the citizenry where it wants to go. And collectively, with a
their notes and tally up any scores if they so desire for their easy reference later
strong town manager, I think we can do that. So I'd appreciate my consideration for your
on. So Mr. Peter Yakabuchi of the search committee will make the introduction.
candidacy tonight.
Thank you. And we, we thank you for your, your application, your interest and your time here tonight. And I think at this point, we'd like to say thank you again and just we'll let you know.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Counselors. I'd like to introduce to Michael Embry. Go ahead, Counselor.
Are we supposed to do something or are we getting the next?
No, I was just going to say unless we have a need for a short break, I believe
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. I'll back you up.
the next candidate is ready to roll.
Go ahead.
And we can move forward. And at this time, I'd like to have the search committee So we'd like to thank you again, Mr. Embry, for coming in. And what we're going to do members introduce our next candidate, Michael Embry. is we will make our way around the dais, ideally to get through two rounds of questioning or as best we can. We'll do that for a little while, about 45 minutes. And then we'll let you answer questions and statements and so forth. So all in all, it'll be about an hour. We'll start with Counselor Steves.
Welcome to Southbridge first of all.
Thank you.
I said, welcome to Southbridge and thank you for coming. And thank you for your participation in this process. Our town has one of Massachusetts' highest asthma teen pregnancy rates and has other issues regarding cancer, MS, autism, lead paint poisoning, and a variety of other issues. What experience do you have in addressing public health concerns, the pollution often linked to them, and in pushing state and federal government to get on the ball in cleaning up contaminated sites?
Well, unfortunately, not much experience with that because I've been in communities that have not had to address most of the problems that you've, that you've just laid out there. We did have some issues in Middletown because there was a former Navy dump, which we had to address. It hadn't caused any health issues because of its location, but it certainly was a public health issue we did have to address. And we worked with the Navy and the federal government to get it cleaned up.
How much experience do you have dealing with looking forward to help communities get to focus on things like climate change and, and bigger picture, long-term preparedness?
Well, right now, with the planning staff, we actually received an award from the State of Rhode Island, D E M and U R I, for having made some changes in our ordinances and proposing other issues to address sea level rise and some climate change. Because as a coastal community, we do have a number of areas that are going to be affected in the future.
Nice to meet you. The town's financial management, it has been stated that there's many problems stemming from unexpected, long-term absences and departure of several key employees. It states that your audit has been late. And also, in February, the state auditor general responded to the town's request for an extension for the 2014 audit with reservations about granting a five-month extension.
That's correct.
So can you explain to me the problem?
Yes. Explain, in 2013, when we got to the end of April, the finance director and the deputy finance director both walked out the door and went to another community for a lot more money. We also had, the next person in line was out for six months with back surgery. And unfortunately, the person after her ended up with a miscarriage. So I went from a department of seven people to two and a half. And I was also the finance director, the deputy finance director. And we had to get resources from outside. I hired people from an outside auditing firm to come in and help us with that, with, with the 13 audit. When we got to 14, I don't, I know the experience has been similar in Massachusetts, but in Rhode Island, it's very difficult to find qualified people to hire as a finance director. It took me probably close to nine months to find someone who was qualified to come on board. Prior to my hiring the finance director, I brought a CPA in that had come out of the health, the health field. And after 10 months, he left because it was totally foreign concept when you get into municipal fund accounting. I quote-unquote stole a finance director from another community. Came in. And we have, we have gotten the department up and running. We still need two more people there. The audit presently is being put together, the booklet is being put together and will be presented to the finance commit, or the audit committee next week.
When is your year-end? It's the same as ours?
It's the same.
June 30th?
It's June 30th. But when you don't have, when you don't have people.
Okay.
And qualified people, the auditor general is doing his job in the language in that letter. He, we've had several phone conversations with him. Quite frankly, he is pleased and surprised that, given the circumstances over the last year and a half, that we were able to accomplish what we have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Vandal?
Good evening, Mr. Embry.
Good evening.
What has been the most difficult situation you have faced in your professional career? And how did you handle the situation?
It's the situation I just described. It was the absolute most difficult situation. We brought people in from the outside, excuse me, to help us close the books. We've had to do some of that this year. But there were a lot of 20-hour days trying to do three or four jobs. But in, in all my years in the business, that was the first time that's happened. And it was difficult. But the positive thing was we did get a clean audit. And the 2014 audit has been clean also with no findings. What we have done is we're going to be paying the audit firm an extra $9,000 to come in and help us evaluate what we need for the two new hires coming in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As a manager, one's success is often tied to how one manages conflict within your own team. What do you know about past or current conflicts within the town of Southbridge? And what experiences have you had in successfully, successfully resolving such conflicts in your own past specifically?
I've only been able to glean what I've been able to read, either going through newspaper accounts, things on the, by the way, I just have a habit of looking this way. I'm not trying to ignore anybody. There are conflicts in any organization. In Middletown, I did have a conflict where we had a situation with the finance director that we, that I actually then had to ask to retire. At the same time, same place, there were two other department heads that when I decided to take a vacation for three days in a row, I, I'd explained to them that a certain situation needed to be taken care of. By the time I got back, it wasn't all that complex. After receiving phone calls three days in a row, I said, if I receive a phone call on the fourth day, then, you know, I guess I don't need you guys. And you need to clean out the, your desks, because this needs to get done. Magically, when I got back, they were talking to one another and the issue was done. Sometimes you have to nudge people along certain ways. I'm fortunate that we have a, we have a great staff in North Kingstown before I got there. And we meet every, twice a month to talk about general things amongst themselves. And they're, they're a great team. I can honestly say, there's never been a conflict that has come to my level. They work things out with one another. And maybe once or twice, I've had a minor referee with, with folks. So I've been fortunate.
Thank you. Counselor Carrasco?
Education and schools are a very important value of our town. In your previous jobs, what has your relationship or role been with the schools, in particular with the school committee and the superintendent? And how would you translate that with our town?
Middle, the Middletown situation was, was excellent. With my 13 years there, I had an excellent relationship with the two superintendents. One thing that worked very well, especially around budget time, was that we would have breakfast or lunch or just stop by one another's offices and talk about who needed what, when, and how and why. And there were many years when the superintendent would say, you know, I need some extra money this year for X. And, well, that's fine. But next year, I'm gonna need some money to come my way because there are items we need to address. That always worked out very well. North Kingstown has had a little more onerous history with the relationship between the council and the school committee. We've gone, since I've been there, my eight years, we've gone through four superintendents for various reasons. The superintendent that's there now, what, basically, we, we've worked out, although it was a little, it was a little crazier with this budget that we just adopted, they asked for a million, million and a half dollars. They've had surpluses every year since 97, 98. That does have an effect on, you know, in Rhode Island, we can't reduce the amount of money to the schools on the bottom line. And for the first time in eight years, there were 430 people who showed up at the budget hearing to insist that the schools get the entire extra half a million dollars, of which the council gave them 300,000. So the superintendent wasn't, wasn't pleased, but I had a very good explanation of why we needed money to pave roads and, and address some of the drainage issues and things on our side. So you, you work as best you can and try to make, try to make both sides understand that there has to be a give and take. Putting money into either organization doesn't necessarily mean you solve the problems, whether it's education-wise or whether there are operational things that need to be addressed on the town, town side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Clements?
Thank you. Hello again.
Hi.
Ms. Clements, as you know, six years on the council. So town boards and committees and citizens groups are sometimes not unanimous on the direction of the town should take. As you may have done your research here, Southbridge has no shortage of controversy and various divisive topics. And you had a question similar. How do you manage in a context where there's a majority on an issue, but nevertheless, a strong minority view on a committee or board?
Well, you have to work with them and try to convince them that, you know, there may be some issues or some ideas on the minority side of things that can be folded into whatever the final product is. I'm just trying to think of an issue. We recently had a bond issue passed to put sewers in our small business district in, in Wickford. And while there was a majority of the business owners who understood it would cost money and it was something that was needed, there were quite a few vociferous business owners who were against it. And we really tried to show them how it was a positive and helped their businesses year-round rather than seasonally. And while they might not have been totally pleased, we did end up getting everybody to, to vote in a positive vein. And it came through with the help of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Strata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, again, what do you think you bring to this job, the other magnet?
I bring to the job, the experience. I'll call it, I'm seasoned. I think I've handled a number of situations very professionally. There's not a lot that, that scares me anymore in the business. When I started in Middletown, I was told after I signed my contract that we have a number of problems. You need to fix them. Just keep us informed. And I found out that we had 10 and a half million dollars of uncollected taxes, $167,000 in the bank, and about $300,000 in an investment that a month later, when I talked to a friend I knew, said, you really need to get it out of there, which ended up collapsing about two weeks later. Although after the first six months, I did go home and say, what did I get myself into? And the next day, you get up and you, you get back and you, you work at it to solve the problems. Now, you know, like any community, this, there are issues here. If anybody's gonna walk in the door and say, number one, they can fix them within the first 30, 60, 90 days, or tell you-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, what do you think you bring to this job, the other magnet?
I bring to the job the experience. I'll call it I'm seasoned. I think I've handled a number of situations very professionally. There's not a lot that scares me anymore in the business. When I started in Middletown, I was told after I signed my contract that we have a number of problems. You need to fix them, just keep us informed. And I found out that we had 10 and a half million dollars of uncollected taxes, $167,000 in the bank, and about $300,000 in an investment that a month later, when I talked to a friend I knew, said, you really need to get it out of there, which ended up collapsing about two weeks later. Although after the first six months, I did go home and say, what did I get myself into? And the next day, you get up and you get back and you work at it to solve the problems. Now, you know, like any community, there are issues here. If anybody's going to walk in the door and say, number one, they can fix them within the first 30, 60, 90 days, or tell you that, here's my plan, I think they're fooling themselves. It will take a while to really get into the issues, but they don't scare me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Mann.
Thank you. Welcome again, Ms. Embry.
Thank you.
Some people have observed that there are two kinds of town managers. Those that are principally managers and stewards of the organization and those that play civic leadership role as well as the role of organizational leader. What kind of leader are you?
I think I'm a combination of both. Actually happy to be here this evening because as president of Wickford Little League, we were able to put off the debate about All-Star coaches and picking the All-Star teams till Sunday. It's, I've been involved in the community in the Chamber of Commerce. This is my third year as president of Little League. I've been in the elementary schools, also a steward of the organization though also because the organization makes everything else go. I think if you talk to any of the people that work for me, that I have a formal informality is my management style. And I like the employees, not just the department heads, to be comfortable. Doesn't mean they get away with whatever they want to get away with, but they need to be comfortable so that we work as a team.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Pelican.
Thank you, Mr. Embry. Many want a town manager with new ideas and lots of energy. How do you meet those requirements?
Well, I have energy. As far as new ideas, sitting in the seat again, I think it will take some time, but there may be different ways to look at issues that might not have been looked at in the past here. Doesn't necessarily mean it's a new idea, but it would, might be something new to the community to consider or the council to consider. If an issue comes up, I'm pretty much wide open to take a look at a lot of different sources or resources to see how an issue can be best addressed.
Counselor Steves.
Even though our town has a balanced budget, the current environment is placing pressure on the town, just like I'm sure it is in your town and cities, your state, I mean. What in your experience prepares you to manage in this kind of environment and create ways to get new sources of funding?
Well, we have, in Rhode Island, there's a 4% levy cap. It's interesting that, I think, the last number I saw was about 13%. 13% of people who live in town are classified as homeless. It's a pretty broad, pretty broad definition. But we do have a large elderly population, unlimited income, so there's always a pressure to stay well below that cap. And I think for the last five years, we've been well below, well, we've been below 3% every year and a couple of years below 2% and having to stretch the dollars. So when it comes to budget time, it's difficult because you really do have to balance what people can, I don't want to necessarily phrase it that way, but what can people take as an increase in their pockets and still keep the organization delivering the services that everyone expects? So it's a difficult balancing act. And every year since I've been in the business, you have to do that. When I worked for the engineering company for three years, I had to do that internally because of running, helping the owner run the business. And there were some tight times when, in those three years, when business was a little tough, so.
So when it is tough like that, how do you go about trying to find new ways around those issues to get, to provide the services that the public needs?
There are very limited ways in this day and age to raise quote unquote new dollars. I mean, there really, there really aren't. You can look for grants, you can look for user fees, but user fees are just taxes by another name. So you really, it's an evaluation process and you start it when you work with your department heads putting the budget together and finding out what's needed as opposed to what's wanted. I mean, that's a first step. We do zero-based budgeting. The budget documents, 253 pages, and every single line item is explained by each of the department heads when they put that together as to why that, let's say contractual services. All right, what does that involve and why do you need contractual services at that level? So they lay out exactly what they're going to use it for during the year.
Counselor Vecchia.
To begin with, that was a very good answer you just gave. Secondly, my question, there are many different opinions and perspectives in our community. And they often manifest in passionate ways, sometimes too passionate, like the school committee. How do you handle strong differing opinions and citizens or elected officials who disagree with your platform or performers?
Well, not to be flip, but many times I just sit there.
Huh?
Many times I just sit there. And I'll give you an example. There was, there was a retired teacher who was not pleased that I had only recommended a million dollars and came up to the microphone and said, fire him. You need to fire him. He's the worst manager ever. I sat there. When you're a manager, when it comes to budget time, the target not only is on the back, it's on the front too sometimes by some groups. You can't, you have to be professional and you have to decide when to respond, how to respond, and if you respond. Sometimes you don't.
That's a very good answer too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It is something we should. Counselor Vandal.
That's things you, it's something you learn as you get more and more into this business?
How would you describe your style in relation to the media and the citizens?
Well, when I was called yesterday by the local newspaper to find out where else I had applied, I said, well, I don't think that's really your business, but you'll find out soon enough. I work with the media, that's fine. I've been asked at times by the council to write editorials or letters to the editor to explain certain positions that maybe the elected officials don't necessarily want to do. I obviously write it and clear it with them. But no problem. I'm not a, I don't need to be on the front page of the newspaper every week and I don't need to be in front of a microphone and on television. But if the situation calls for it, I am. I've been on television, I've been on a public affairs show. So whatever, whatever the situation calls for, but I prefer to let the elected leaders take that role.
Thank you. Which of these two quotes do you agree with more? First is from Thomas Jefferson, that delay is preferable to error. The other is from William Shakespeare, defer no time, delays have dangerous ends.
I find one of the frustrating things at times in government is let's make a decision and move forward. If it's the wrong, there's very little the government does that can't be corrected. And I'll give you an example. The sewer project in Wickford, we went through 20 options and it took eight months. And the option that was selected was option number two. And the staff just, we all kind of scratched our heads and said, okay, and then move on. But we've made, we've made decisions. I've made some decisions when I was in Middletown, one or two, where at a council meeting, something was brought up and I said, you know what? We goofed. We made a mistake, we'll change it. If you can't admit your mistakes, then you don't belong in the chair.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Carrasco.
Can you please describe a situation where you had to step up and lead relative to a controversial issue?
The recent fire situation that we went through that we won in the Supreme Court. We went from a four-platoon to a three-platoon fire operation. We started in negotiations and asked the fire union to come up with substantial savings because we had done the same with the police department. They did not. I sat with the council and said, the only, with the labor attorney and said, the only way we're going to move this forward and try to save dollars are to go to a three-platoon system. Under the charter, we had the ability to reorganize any department. We realized we had to negotiate the particulars, but I was the front, I was front and center, explaining it to the newspapers, having firefighters walk up the driveway at the house and being upset. But we kept it moderately professional most of the times, but I was the, I was the front person with the labor attorney. But we went through three and a half councils that stuck with it. So I think that was proof in the pudding. And as I say, we were victorious in the Supreme Court. And after the court ruling was issued, we sat with the union and had a contract in three meetings. So I think that also proves something.
Thank you. Counselor Clements.
Thank you. A municipality is a direct service organization. Residents make judgments about their town based on the services they receive. We have a full-time fire, a full-time police, great library. One of our best services right now, of course, is free trash pickup. That's what most people would consider one of our best services, I think, which will go away eventually. What have you done to improve services and the perception of town services?
Well, we trained, we trained some folks in town hall about a little better customer, I hate, I don't like the word customer, dealing with the citizens coming in for services. Also what we did was we, I went to the council and said, look, we're, we have limited staff. We keep limiting or cutting back on budget. We need to step up the technology in town to allow people to pay bills online. And that hadn't been done. A lot of people take, take advantage of that. The other thing we did, it sounds fairly simple, was we put a drop box out in front of town hall, bolted it into newly poured cement. So, you know, the deadline may be on Monday, but somebody has to go to work. They can drop the envelope on Saturday. It's locked, it's vandal-proof. And people have taken great advantage of that. We also established a lock box for payments so that, again, people could mail it, they didn't have to stand in line for 20 minutes at town hall. And I think that was, that was a real big one. And we also did, we also implemented curbside recycling with the automatic big bins. And people have really taken to that instead of the small buckets.
Single stream. It's great. Thank you.
Counselor Strata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What do you do to prepare for tonight's interview?
Well, I went through the, I went through the budget, I went through the comprehensive plan and some other documents that were there, you know, scanned through them. Well, I didn't scan through them, I read them, took a look at the budget. And that gave me a pretty good grounding. I do have to say the comp plan, I enjoyed the comprehensive plan because normally, I mean, there were no bunches pulled, which is very good. It addressed issues directly. Most of the time, comp plans are flowery documents that sometimes sit on the shelves too long. Anybody that is elected or anybody that walks through the door to sit as the town manager, I mean, that lays out a course of action.
Thank you. Counselor Mann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you describe a situation in which you played a leadership role in bringing new business or infrastructure to a community?
We, we have the Quonset Development Park and it's a quasi-governmental agency. It's the old Navy base in town. So we don't have direct control over that, but there have been a number of times when the executive director will call me up and will meet with a company that comes in. We do have some tax programs that we're able to make, avail them of if they so choose. So we've had some pretty large businesses move into the park. And we recently, on our end of things, negotiated a payment and little tax agreement with a major expansion of electric boat about a year ago. So we've, when we have been able to, we don't have that much property that's controlled by the town or private folks to have large companies come in. So we rely on working with QDC for bringing those large companies in over on their campus.
Thank you.
Counselor Pelican.
Thank you. Our citizens expect their public officials to be available and accessible to them. How do you interact with citizens and what concrete actions have you taken in your previous jobs to improve direct services and communication to citizens?
Well, we finally, besides the town website, we do have a Twitter and a Facebook account, which we use. It's primarily for information, getting information out to the public. We avoid a lot of back and forth conversation with that. I have an open-door policy. The worst thing people want to hear is, when they want to see the managers, could you make an appointment, please? So people, I had a gentleman today while I was in the middle of a meeting, came up and wanted to know why he couldn't write a check for his motor vehicle tax. It was late and he needed it stamped, so we couldn't take the check. He had to pay in cash so we could stamp it for him. But I was in the middle of a meeting and he just, you know, he walked in, so nobody was surprised, let's put it that way, at the meeting, so.
Thank you.
So at this point, we've gone through a couple rounds of questioning and we fit you with a lot of questions here. So in what time we have left, it's only fair for you to be able to respond and ask any questions you may have for the council as a whole.
You know, it may, it may sound strange, but after, I mean, I've got a good sense of what the community is looking for. I've got a good sense of what many of the issues are. And as I said before, it doesn't, doesn't scare me. It's going to be hard work. It can be hard work for anybody coming in, but have to have a team, a team approach. Looking, and again, I'll go back to the comp plan, looking at how some of the issues were addressed. I think there were focus groups, but it looks like, I mean, that's a method that needs to go forward in order to try to get people together. Especially with the school issue, I thought it was interesting that there seemed to be this constant connection between school problems and, I saw the word racism brought up, and it seemed to be at times connected with the school issue. And if in fact that's legitimate, then there are a lot of people that need to talk to one another to try to get over that so that improvements in the community can be made. I'm not saying that is a value judgment that that term came up, but, I mean, it's like that in any community to certain, to a certain extent, certain extent. And I think someone coming in, you need to take the comp plan and what's there to heart and let's try to find a way to get people talking and get over that and improve, improve the school system.
And what you're referencing there, you were saying was the comprehensive master plan?
Yeah, the one, this is the, yeah, this one that recently done.
Right. I just wanted to make sure in case anybody was alarmed or questioned or concerned.
Sure. So, like I said, if I'm chosen, I'm ready. My thought would be I would rent an apartment. You need to, you need to be immersed and you need to be immersed quickly to get up and running as quickly as possible.
Okay. Well, with that, unless you have any, I'm sorry, Counselor Vecchia.
I just had one more question. We have an economic development department, but we don't, never getting any new businesses. And that's our biggest problem. We don't have the tax base. And if we don't get a new tax base, we're in, we're in big trouble. What would you do to promote new businesses?
You have to take a look at, you have to take a look at what we have quote unquote for resources. What do we have for a plan? How do, how do we work with the Chamber of Commerce? The problem in New England, and especially the problem in Rhode Island, is everybody's chasing the same brass ring. It's, with the economy, you know, it's very, there are very limited big employers that you're going to bring in, whether it's, whether it's here, whether it's Rhode Island. One of the things we've run into in Rhode Island is we have a major strip on Post Road that has about 10 vacant buildings, three of them that have been vacant for nine years. Part of the problem is the owners want too much money. Another problem is you bring people in and they look and they play communities off against one another, basically to the highest bidder. So it's a difficult task and every New England community right now is chasing the same brass ring. So it's not going to be easy. We have to sell, you have to sell your assets and sell yourself.
Would you hire? Would you hire, think of hiring an economic development planner, like a salesman, to get us new businesses?
Well, I'd have to evaluate what the program is and what the, what the people who are responsible for promoting the community and economic development, who's doing what now, and what are they doing, and what could they do differently. I don't necessarily want to recommend hiring an additional staff person if you can, I'll say, push the people or, and I'm not going to use the word incentivize because it's not a real word, get people to expand their job, I'll say. And if that doesn't work, then you have to look to do something else.
That's, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So unless you have any other questions or comments at this time, we'd like to thank you for coming out and, and, I'm sorry? Well, he already made his closing statement, really, so. So again, just wanted to thank you for your time.
Very nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you.
Come on. Thank you. See you.
So at this point in time, we are a little ahead of schedule at this point, so we will take a, let's see, it is 7:05. We'll take about a 10-minute recess. It will be what we endeavor to do. Buck? It is 7:27, and at this point, we will again have Terry Cognaci from the Search Committee introduce our next candidate.
At this point, I'm very pleased to introduce Ronald Sanangelo.
Thank you very much. Can I hear these out real quick?
Sure.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Reverend Houghman.
Thanks for making me.
[laughing].
Just for what it's worth.
So welcome, Mr. Sanangelo. And just to update you, or inform you rather, the process that we're going to do here tonight, each counselor has a couple of questions, and we'll run through, ideally through two rounds if time permits. After that, we'll allow for you to ask any questions you may have and also make a closing statement. The plan is for about one hour in total, so we'll take about 45 minutes' worth of questions directed to you, and then the last 15 minutes or so, we'll kind of work out the other way around.
Sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we will start with Counselor Steves.
First of all, thank you for coming to our town and being part of this process. Welcome to Southbridge. Our town has one of Massachusetts' highest asthma in teen pregnancy rates, has other issues relating to cancer, MS, autism, lead paint poisoning, a variety of other health issues. What kind of experience do you have in addressing public health issues, the pollution often linked to them, and in pushing the state and federal government to get on the ball in cleaning up contaminated sites?
Terrific. Thank you. I was going to say, it's a little bit hard to hear with the echo from the microphone, just so you know, I didn't catch everything exactly as you said, but let me try to answer it the best I can. First of all, I came from a community originally that's very much like this community. It's a town called Nogget, Connecticut, of about 32,000 people, with a budget of about $85 million. It was very much like Southbridge, and it was a factory town. It used to have Uniroil Chemical, Uniroil Footwear, a variety of different manufacturers. And like Southbridge, they sort of moved away and changed the whole downtown. We had the same kind of issues when it relates to health issues, because we had a chemical company right in town. So we had a very strong visiting nurses association in our town that helped with all kinds of different healthcare kinds of issues. So a regular basis, I was involved in day-to-day operations and discussions with my department head with regard to the visiting nurses. Also, deal with the school nurses and the school administration to make sure they provide all the healthcare in the schools to the children, which is critically important, as you know, making sure they have all their vaccinations, making sure that their medical records are all there, and they were prepared for any kind of emergency as well. But, but healthcare is a community issue, and we have to deal with all issues. We worked regularly with two hospitals where I came from. South, one was Waterbury Hospital, and one was St. Mary's Hospital. So we had very good relationships with the presence of both of those hospitals, and we worked with them on a regular basis. We also had our own, unlike here and in Hanson, we had our own separate ambulance company. It was a nonprofit. So I worked with them to make sure that we provided proper ambulance care as well, and making sure that we were coordinated between the ambulances and the hospitals. So healthcare, there's a lot of different ways you tackle healthcare issues. So I think I've hit in a variety of different ways that I've worked in that area.
And how about the environmental elements of those?
Environmental issues?
Yeah.
Well, again, I'm going to target specific problems that I dealt with. We had, we have our own sewage treatment plant, and there's a lot of smell from that treatment plant. As you know, as you keep, you have to keep updating them and spending a lot of money to update the incinerators and things. I'm sure you're aware of that, with the new state and federal regulations. And that's an issue for health for us as well, because we have a lot of people that lived around that plant and who believe that they had serious health issues as well as it relates to that plant. Also, because we were a factory town, we had a lot of older people who had been like my mom and dad, were factory workers, who that was, I mean, in the old days, that was how many thousands of people in my town made a living. And they had a lot of health issues as a result of, when I was a kid, I'll give you an example, the Nogget River was, was all kinds of different colors, okay? And I think most of us can relate to that when we're in factory towns in the old days, the rivers were very polluted. So we've dealt with environmental issues and river cleanup. We've dealt with, as it relates to healthcare issues, we dealt with it as a relation to sewage treatment issues. So the environment's very important to us. We've created some greenways and some walking paths to improve the environment. We obviously improved our recycling to be able to, to reduce our waste consumption and to recycle as much as we could. We have our own, you know, we actually have a lot of ball fields and create a lot of passive open space, which is important for the environment. We have walking trails, we have a state park nearby, we had thousands of acres of state forest. So we worked very hard on making sure that we had, because we were a larger town, we wanted to make sure there was a lot of open space for our citizens to enjoy that was out, more on the outskirts of the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Vecchia?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
There are many different opinions and perspectives in our community, and they often manifest in passionate ways. How do you handle strong, different opinions and citizens or elected officials who disagree with your platform or performance?
Well, I would like to say that I'm perfect, and everybody agrees with me all the time. Seldom is that the case. I'm very passionate, like many people are, like my town counselors would be, so you can expect passion back at you. I enjoy debate. I enjoy communicating. I enjoy discussing issues with people. I don't ever take offense or take something personal if you say something to me that is not of my opinion. So, you know, I'm going to, I may challenge you on some discussions to make sure that, you know, we can, to me, the best solutions come out of that challenged discussion. When we're all throwing out ideas, we're discussing things, and something good will come out of that. It might not be all your idea, it might not be all mine, it might be a good compromise, and we can learn something from each other. So I'm excited about debate. I, I live and thrive off of that kind of discussion. I like it to be positive, and I'm not here to attack you or to attack any citizen. I'm here to discuss things in an intelligent way. I will calm it down if it needs to be calmed down, if it goes too far. But passion is good. I mean, if we don't have passion, how are we going to move forward? So to me, you know, I, I thrive off excitement. I hope that you all thrive off excitement, that we can have some fun together. This job's hard. We're going to make hard decisions, but we ought to have some fun, we ought to have some passion, we ought to have some excitement, because if we don't have it, the citizens aren't going to have it, and we need to build it in them.
I like the answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Sanangelo. How would you describe your style in relation to the media and the citizens? Listen, the media are my friends. I, I like the media. I, I hate to say this in public, but I utilize the media to what I need to have done. You know, I'm out in the media all the time because I need to sell my community. I mean, we, we're going to be talking a lot about economic development in this community, right? Unless I can use the media to get our message out about the benefits of coming here, I can't win. I can't get what I need to do. So I need to have those positive relationships. I constantly use public access TV. I've done 16 public access shows in the last two years. Every month, I do one with a different department head or a different thing that's going on in town, to be able to let the community know what we're doing. They need to know that if they go to the assessors' office, this is what they're going to expect, and this is the benefits they can expense, and how to get the best use from our public health department, or from our highway surveyor, or a selectman. I need to have that open discussion with the community because I need them to support my agenda and your agenda. All right? So it's my job to support your agenda, but in doing so, I need the public to support our agenda, right? So the media is the best way to do that, open communication with the citizens, to get them to buy into our, our goals and objectives, and then we can meet those goals and objectives. We can't do it without them. And they don't scare me, and I'm, I'm very used to it. I can talk to anybody on any level. I've been on TV in state issues and, and major talk shows, and it's, it's not a problem for me. I enjoy it. Very good answer. Thank you. You're welcome.
As a manager, one success is often tied to how one manages conflict within your own team. What do you know about past or current conflicts within the town of Southbridge, and what experiences have you had in successfully resolving such conflicts in the past, and any specific examples? Please.
Wow. That's interesting, just watching the structuring discussion the other day. We talked about, and I know, Sean, I had an opportunity to look at your Facebook page, and you keep good notes, so to speak. I had an opportunity to look at that. Listen, there are going to be important discussions and important disagreements. We need to, to work together to make compromises. A lot of that discussion, for instance, I think should have happened before it got to the school committee level. You know, you have to develop plans that are, frankly, if I develop a plan, I'm expecting that I'm going to talk to enough of you that what I bring to the table is going to be supported. So bringing a plan that's not going to be supported to you makes me look really bad. I don't enjoy that. And I don't think you enjoy sitting there going against what I'm doing as a town manager, right? So it's all about communication and conflict and trying to resolve that. As I said before, we all can't get what we want. We're never going to get 100% of what we want. The deal is, if we want to move forward, we've got to compromise and come to solutions that work for everybody. So I'm very big, Sean, on, on win-win situations. You know, you may win a little, I may win a little, and together we win big. That's kind of the way I look at it. So, so to me, I'm used to conflict. It doesn't offend me. It's a matter of, you know, I like frankly having the high-level discussion where there's a lot of conflict in the beginning, and then slowing it down and bringing it down, because in that conflict brings out some passion and some ideas. So you want to let that go a little while, but then you've got to calm it down and bring it to where you have a useful discussion. So you can't, people have, you can't be passionate the whole time in the conversation, you won't get anything done. So at some point, we've got to slow it down, have that communication, and come to a conclusion that has majority support at least, and hopefully, everybody understands at least why, even if they're voting no, at least why the people voting yes are voting yes, right?
Thank you.
Good to see you again, Mr. Sanangelo. The question I have today is, education and schools are very important values of our town. In your previous jobs, what has been your relationship or role with the schools, school committee, and superintendent? How would you translate it here in our town?
Well, I'm going to start in my first experience, and then I'll talk about my second experience. So back in Nogget, where I originally come, came from, the, we call it a board of mayor and burgesses, it's the town council, just like you, had a very bad relationship with our school committee. They just, there was just no trust in that. So when I was there as a town manager, we called it mayor, I was a mayor at that time, I brought those two groups together, and we worked out our differences, and we did it by making sure that the school committee presented us solid budget numbers with good explanations. So we wanted to know, you know, how much money they had and how they were spending it, and that they weren't going to move it around after we, we finished making some deal, an agreement, right? So I, when I came in, I came into a very bad situation between the two groups. When I left, we had a great working relationship with the, with the school committee. On top of that, some of the things we benefit, benefited from, because we built that good relationship, is that the town I came from now shares the same attorneys as the town council, which saved us some money in terms of legal fees, and there had to be a trust to do that. Also, now the school system has, neither the town or the school system had an HR director. I built up an HR and hired a new HR director and built up an HR department. That HR department now also is an HR department for the school system. So what that did is allow us to share resources, which saved tax dollars, and also built up a trust and a relationship between both sides of government, the school committee, and the, our board of mayor and burgesses, our council. So I'm very good at doing that. I think the schools, you know, we're separate in terms of government, right? But we're not separate in terms of a town. We're all one community, and we need to build a school system. It's not, we don't want to take potshots at the school committee. We need to bring together and come to some conclusion, again, a compromise, to move the school system forward. So we need to understand that quality education, even though it's not a town council issue directly, it's extremely important to our overall community goals, right? So I would be working with the school superintendent, as I do now in Hanson. I have a great relationship with not only our school superintendent, I talk to her all the time, but I'm on the phone with our school committee chairman on a regular basis. We have a great relationship, so that respect has to be there. He knows that I'm there to help him, and that if he needs resources, if he needs help, he can come to me. We particularly work together when it comes to emergency management issues, right? So I have, we have snow issues here, right? We need to make sure that the schools are plowed, we need to make sure that the buses are cleared, the bus routes, so we can get kids to school. So we have an emergency management, management group that includes the school superintendent. We meet on a regular basis to plan for emergencies, to make sure that the roads are together, when the schools are going to open and close. There's a lot of things that we work together on. God forbid there's ever a shooter or some bad thing that happens in the school. We develop our police department, fire department, public works department. We develop plans together to make sure we're prepared for those emergencies. So the school system, the school superintendent, is an integral part of our community, and we need to be excited about that and see how we can help by sharing resources to benefit both parties.
Thank you.
Counselor Clemens?
Thank you. Good evening again.
Good evening.
A municipality is a, is a direct service organization. Residents make judgments about their town based on the services they receive.
I'm sorry, Denise, I can't hear what you're saying. Could you repeat that, please?
Try that again. Usually, that's not the case.
There's a little bit of echo here, and I'm having a little bit of difficulty.
Technical difficulty. A municipality is a direct service organization. Residents make judgments about their town based on the services they receive.
I'm sorry, Denise, I can't hear what you're saying. Could you repeat that, please?
Try that again. Usually, that's not the case.
There's a little bit of echo here, and I'm having a little bit of difficulty.
Technical difficulty. A municipality is a direct service organization. Residents make judgments about their town based on the services they receive.
I'm sorry, Denise, I can't hear what you're saying. Could you repeat that, please?
Try that again. Usually, that's not the case.
There's a little bit of echo here, and I'm having a little bit of difficulty.
Technical difficulty. A municipality is a direct service organization. Residents make judgments about their town based on the services they receive. If you've done your homework on ours, you know we have full-time fire, full-time police, a wonderful library, we have our own ambulance service, we have lots of wonderful, wonderful services here in our community, especially free trash pickup, which will go away, and that'll be an issue that'll have to be worked on. What have you done to improve services and the perception of town services in your experiences?
Great. First of all, I demand from my employees great customer service. First up, when you come to Town Hall, you should expect, expect all of our employees to be polite, to be helpful, and to have a smile as, as much as they can, and to provide quality services. So that's instrumental in my department head meetings, to discuss that with my department heads. I expect it of the whole team. We are there to provide a service, and the taxpayers are our customers. The citizens in the town are our customers. So that's issue number one in this draft. I'm very open with my department heads. I meet with them, first of all, I have an open-door policy, so they stroll in as they need to. But I also have a once-a-month department head meeting where I expect, I go through the things that are going on throughout the month, and then I ask them to go through what's going on in their department during that month. And we share ideas back and forth among department heads to make sure that we have good communication amongst all of our department heads. Customer service improvement, what I did, I'll give you an example. Our transfer station, which is where we bring all of our trash, we don't, we're not fortunate we don't have curbside collection. We had a ton of people from out of town who were using our transfer station. It was amazing, because we hadn't changed the sticker program to allow you to get in there in like eight years. So people that moved out were using our transfer station, businesses were using our transfer station, all at taxpayers' expense, okay? So one of the things they did is we changed, again, we re-updated the sticker system, we changed to a pay-as-you-throw program, if you're familiar with the pay-as-you-throw If you're familiar with the pay-as-you-throw program, we instituted, uh, single stream recycling. We did a lot of things because systems were now going to pay a little bit more for bags, okay, which is part of a, a pay-as-you-throw program. But we also needed to provide better quality service. So we made it easier at the transfer station. We made improvements at the transfer station. When we first started the program and we talked about it, people hated it. They wanted no part of it. Now everybody, well, I can't say they love it, but they're very pleased because it's easier to go through there. The transfer station runs way better than it did. We reduced the solid waste stream in Hanson in, in the last, since July of last year by sixty-five percent in our solid waste budget. So improved customer service, we, and shortly, we just hired new staff. We're going to open on Sundays to increase customer service for Sundays as well. So there's ways to improve customer service and save money at the same time. That's what we did in Hanson. So, you know, customer service all the way around, improving services to citizens is important. An issue here, I, and I know that you've already, you have some addressed it, Spanish, being able to have some town hall employees being able to speak Spanish is important. I was talking to, I think it was the assistant clerk, who has happened to be one of those as I was coming in here. That's a critical issue. When people come here and they can't communicate, it's hard to get business done, right? So we need to make sure that that and my staff is ready to deal with those situations so citizens don't have to wait twenty-five minutes or a half an hour for that service. So we need to look at that. I don't know where you're at with it, but I think it's something I want to make sure that anyone that comes into town hall is provided an opportunity to get their business done in a reasonable timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Strata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll see you one more time, Mr. Sanangelo.
Thank you.
What do you think you bring to this job that the others mean not?
I'm sorry, bring this job, what was the last part of it?
And what do you think you bring to this job that the others mean not?
Okay. Well, that's an easy one for me. I'm going to bring some excitement to this job and we're going to have some fun. You know, I regularly, and any one of the candidates that you came, they can do budgets. They're experienced budget makers, they can do planning, we can all do that and we all give you that. I can give you something extra. What I give you is some fun, some excitement and some community aspects of working and building this community. I routinely go in and talk to children in the school system. I do it because it makes me happy and I thought, I used to go in there thinking I was helping them, but it turned out that they were helping me because the children, they help you increase your positive attitude and you remember what this is all about, creating a community. My town, you know, I passed the budget and we did the normal routine things of the day, but I did things like, we created with the chamber of commerce, a duck race, and I think you might have one like that. We created a duck race. Thousands of people came downtown to be part of our duck race and every charity in town made money because when you sell a duck, the chamber of commerce got fifty cents, but the charity got fifty cents. But thousands of people came down to our downtown core to be part of this duck race. We have a big live TV screen and it was fun and the businesses all had creative duck displays. Our lawyers had a duck judge and, you know, duck lawyers and it was fun. But what I bring to you is bringing together the community. Uh, I had a, a car show right downtown. The reason I did it is I wanted people to see the businesses we had downtown. So we showed off a road, we had a car show down there and it was a blast. And again, thousands of people came, they went in and out of the stores as they were waiting, but it created a community. What people love about your community is not the fact that you have a budget, it's about you're doing things that people and families can come down and enjoy. An ice skating rink, put, built an ice skating rink in the winter right in the center of town on our town green. So I'm there for a couple of months, but there was nothing better than looking in my window in the mayor's office and seeing grandparents down there with these young children making memories. So that's the kind of stuff that I enjoy. Now, we have to do the core business, but you have to have the community aspect of it. That's what makes your town something special, is having the community. I, I know that, I'm not sure if you took a pie Shaw, Sean, but a number of you took pies to the face, right? Why is that important? Well, because the community sees you as one of them and you're building up that community spirit at the, at the Southridge Fest, right? Those things, they look silly, they're, but they're critical to the enjoyment of the community, to being part of the community. So those are the kind of things that you're going to see me talking about and in my free time, working on that with staff and different people because that's what really a town is about. It's not about the budget. The budget serves all the purposes, but it's about the community aspect of this job.
Thank you.
Councilor Manor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello again.
Hello.
Some people have, have observed that there are two kinds of town managers. Those that are principally managers and stewards of the organization and those that play civic leadership role as well as the role of organizational leader. What kind of leader are you?
Both. I mean, it's clear. Like I can do all the paperwork, I can do all the budgets, I can do all the stuff that town managers do. But I'm also a part of the community and I get involved very actively in the community. I will be at, like you, getting a pie in the face because that's part of what we do, is being part of the community. I will be at most of the charity events and things that are going on around town. Uh, because again, I need to not only support the charities, but I need to network with those people and they need to believe in me. If the community doesn't believe in me, it's difficult to get things done, right? So I need the community to know that I believe in them and I believe in the town and I'm there to support the town, right? I read the master plan. I went through it probably four or five times to look at the master plan. A big part of that master plan talks about building the spirit of the community, about, about the pride in this community. This community has pride and has a history, a beautiful, a great history frankly. Selling that history and talking to people and bringing back that pride is critical, particularly as it relates to the school system, right? We need to build more faith in the school system. We need to work with the, hopefully a new superintendent to really create positive things in the community that people see and are excited about. So, you know, I can do all the practical work, but I can also do the community service work. I'm part of the Hanson Historical Society, for instance. I show up at the shortcake festival we're doing next week. I created a Hanson Day. So this Sunday will be our second Hanson Day. Last year we did our first. It, it, what it is, it's all the different organizations in towns come together. We have like a camp and they showcase what's best about Hanson. So that's, our second one's happening this Sunday and I'm excited about it. It's going to be fun, but it also is going to raise a lot of money for the charities because they have gift raft, uh, gift basket raffles and particularly our food bank made a lot of money off of it last year. The only people I let sell stuff there are the community organizations. So the Boy Scouts can be selling hamburgers, hot dogs to raise money for the Boy Scouts. Bringing together all of our community organizations allows them to talk, to network and it builds that community foundation and it also helps them by giving them the money they need to promote activities throughout the year. So I think the, the community aspect is probably one of the most important part of this jobs, of this job.
Thank you.
Councilor Pellet.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sanangelo, many want a town manager with new ideas and lots of energy. How do you meet those requirements?
Oh, I think you could tell I have some energy. Uh, I, I've had energy, I, I, I like this job and I, before I came back into town management, I tried to, a period of time where I went in the private sector. So I was building, I was a project manager, building large IT projects for both Cigna Insurance and John Hancock, right? And I didn't even have to leave my house. I was a project manager. I called people on the phone, we had big phone conferences, I could work off the computer. People said, what a great job. You never even have to leave your house, right? That's not me. There's, there's no excitement to me that Cigna has a new data center. That doesn't exactly build enthusiasm in me. What I love is building a park, taking some old houses down and seeing something new come out of that. Having a new business come to town in an industrial park, that's what makes me feel good because I can see that change and see how a community can grow. Now this community has, I guess what I'm excited most about this community is it has a huge opportunity to grow. You've got some industrial parks that I've had an opportunity to go through. I've been at your airport, I looked at the, outside of the restaurant that you guys are trying to recreate. Uh, I've taken a tour, I went into the, uh, the convention center. It's beautiful, it's an amazing asset. I talked to the person at the desk to talk about, you know, how the military uses that, that convention center regularly, but how now it's doing so well, they don't need it as much. Um, I've had an opportunity to tour your high school, middle school and went with the vice principal and talked about some of the issues at the schools. It's a beautiful facility, right? So we have the tools to grow. We have a master plan that I know we started, you started to do some work on. We need to do more it sounds and, and build off that master plan. Uh, we, again, I hate when you put master plans are built and you leave them on a shelf. That's not the purpose of a master plan is, is to give us the tools to do what we need to do, right? So you guys have a great foundation to build from. It takes that excitement, that energy and that passion to move it and I'm going to expect each of you to be working with me with that passion, with that energy to move it forward. So we'll have a lot of things going on at one time. That may scare you a little bit, but we are going to move. We will not be sitting still. You will see enthusiasm and passion and you'll see things happen. At first it'll be a little scary because there'll be a lot of things going on, but we'll get it done. It always comes to fruition.
Thank you.
Councilor Steves.
Even though, to go back to that, to kind of the more nuts and bolts stuff, even though our town budget has, our town has a balanced budget, um, the current environment is placing pressures on the town, I'm sure in Hanson as well.
Yeah.
What are your, what is, what in your experience prepares you to manage in this kind of environment and create new ways to get money?
Okay, I, I had a little time again hearing you. What are some of the ways that I use the budget resources to benefit my town?
What in your, what in your experience prepares you to manage in this kind of fiscal environment and create new ways to get money?
Okay. So currently I'm managing a twenty-two million dollar budget in my community. It's a little smaller, we're about ten thousand. You guys are about sixteen thousand. The community I came from where I was mayor for four years was thirty-two thousand and at that time was about an eighty-five million dollar budget. Probably now it's closer to ninety-five or, I think it's actually a little over a hundred million right now. I also had an opportunity to serve in the state legislature in Connecticut for ten years where I served for, I believe, six years on appropriations where we worked on multi-billion dollar budgets. So I have tremendous amount of experience working across all levels of budgets, from the real hands-on approach with a small government, uh, to a larger sized government where we work a lot with our town accountant. So I use the key players, right? So I'm, I'm developing a budget pretty much like everybody else. I bring in my department heads, I make them present a budget to me first. We all work together on that budget. I understand what their priorities are and before they come into that room, they better know what their priorities are and what their plan is, not just for one year, but for multiple years, right? So I don't want a department head to come in and say, okay, I want three percent more than last year. Well, I'm not going to be very happy if they come in with that. I want to hear why they need more money, what they need more money for and what the long-term benefit to their department is going to be. Specifically, these days as it relates to technology, I want to know they have a technology plan in a way they're going to use that technology to benefit that particular department over a long term. So I'm looking for things like software updates and new software and things that are going to help that department utilize their resources better because that takes pressure off staff and moves it into the technology world, right? So I, my normal budget process is to work with department heads and I bring in my town accountant in with those department head meetings and maybe one or two other people and we go through individual departments one at a time. As we do that, I'm jotting down what the priorities are, what things we should be, what I think is I would support and not support. And then after I do all the different town budgets, we put together a package, myself, the town accountant and in this, in my case, the selectmen's assistant. We package it up and I let my department heads know and we discuss why I support it or why I didn't support particular priorities they thought they had. Of course, every department thinks that everything they have in their budget is the most important priority in the world, right? Well, that may be true for that department, but it's not the priorities of the whole town as a whole, right? So my job is to, to look at everybody's priority and look at, see which one of the ones most important, what I can support now, what I might be able to support next year, what I might be able to support the year after that and develop a plan and how we're going to use our resources over the long term, right? That's my operating budget. Of course, the capital budget's a little bit different. We're looking at a more longer term. We're looking at potentially how we're going to bond or how we're going to borrow money for it, what the plan's going to be, again, what the priorities are. So I work all that out with, with my department head. Before I generally do that though, just because I skipped this step, I usually meet with my board of selectmen, in this case, town council, to talk about what their priorities are. Truthfully, usually that's in stay under two and a half percent. Don't spend too much in each individual selectman or town council member might have something they particularly want, right? So that goes into my mix. And then at the end, I bring back a budget to the town council that's reasonable, that makes sense, where I can present to you why it makes sense, why these priorities should be what they are. And at the end of the day, you make the decision if you agree, how we might tailor that, alter that and, and we, we go on from there. But in that, my department heads and my town accountant, potentially my town treasurer, collector will be major players in how we put together that package. But it, the foundation is your department heads. If they know what they're doing and they're good, they bring you the good budgets to start with. So they, the better department heads I have, the easier my job is. If I have department heads a week and I've got to help them put together a budget, then I need to spend some coaching time with them. So I want a good, solid team so that my end product, you know, my start project determines how good my end product is, right? So I want a good, solid team upfront to be able to build that. And then of course, our finance committee is working at the same time as I am with the budget I gave them and they're tailoring it their way too and I'm meeting with them to discuss, uh, what they think is important, right? So it's, it's, it's a constant communication issue between all the different, uh, people involved, the stakeholders, and then coming to a conclusion that works for everybody.
Actually, to follow up with that is...
Kind of a long question to kind of answer, but...
You mentioned the need for a good, solid team. And one of the things that we have coming forward is the need to hire several key department heads.
I'm sorry, say it again?
We are, we are, we're going to have the need to hire several key department heads in the very near future, among other things, yes. Um, and what, what kind of experience do you have with hiring department heads and...
A lot, in particular a new chief. Uh, in the community I came from that was thirty-two thousand, our chief retired. Uh, truthfully, I helped him retire because he had, it was, it was his time to retire. He was old, he was making bad judgment calls and, and we talked a lot and thank God he decided to retire. Uh, we brought in a new chief and it was a controversial police chief. And the reason it was controversial is because our police department, although our deputy chief wasn't going for the job, uh, one of our lieutenants wanted the job. He wanted to jump from lieutenant to chief. And of course, the detective bureau where he was the head, they wanted him to jump to that position too because they wanted an inside candidate. Now, it's nice to be able to hire an inside candidate if you have one that has the qualifications to be the chief. In this particular case, the lieutenant wasn't ready to be chief. Potentially would have made a good deputy chief, but it was too big a jump for his skill set to get to be chief. Uh, we interviewed candidates, um, and we went through a, a whole variety of different candidates and that lieutenant was allowed to be part of that process. In the end, that lieutenant didn't, did not get the job. We brought in an outside police chief, um, Chief Ebsen, uh, Edson, um, who turned out to be one of the, I think, the best police chiefs in Connecticut. He was recently recognized by the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association. He's a quality guy. Of course, when he, uh, went into the job, uh, some people did not, in the police department, did not treat him all that well. He had to earn their respect. He did. And all those officers who were upset that we didn't give it to an inside candidate ended up having tremendous respect for the new police chief and it's been a, the, the department went from a, a variety of different factions, which you get in police departments, to being a cohesive unit who is working extremely well together. So I'm very proud. It was the last thing I did before I left and it turned out to be probably the, one of the best things that I did when I, you know, because it, people still to this day are praising how this police chief changed a, hate to say it, dysfunctional police department because it was so factionalized to a very functional, very popular police department it was so factionalized, to a very functional, very popular police department that's providing quality services. And he's made good judgment calls in who we picked for deputy chief and rearranged his staff, and it's turned out to be a positive thing. I've also hired an HR director. As I said, we had no HR department in our town. HR laws, community resource laws, are very, very complex these days, and you can get sued very easy if you don't understand the laws that relates to people, right? It was very important for the town size I had of 32,000 people to bring in an HR director who really understood the laws. That HR director ended up saving us a bunch of money because instead of paying lawyers to do a lot of the groundwork for the labor negotiations, she was able to do a lot of that groundwork. So I didn't have to pay the lawyers to do that work. Also, it resulted in lower worker comp claims and getting employees back to work faster. And it actually, I think it actually lowered our insurance rates as well. So there was a lot of benefits to doing that, and it really, most of that position got paid for from the savings I had in legal fees as a result of not having to pay a lawyer. So now, I'm not, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm going to be straight up, I'm not one that likes to pay lawyers, okay? So I'm only going to pay them when I have to pay them, when I need them. I've had enough legal experience, working in legislature for 10 years and reviewing laws and bills, that I'm pretty good. I don't call upon lawyers unless there's a real need for lawyers. I've never been sued as a result of not using a lawyer to date, so I'm comfortable that we'll use them as appropriate. And I hire my staff, I think I said this when I was talking to you guys, Sean, in the screening committee, I want them to be smarter than me. Now, what does that mean? That means that I'm not an expert in everything. I hate to tell you that. I'm not an expert in police business or fire business. My job isn't to be a police chief. My job is to manage my team, right? So when I hire a police chief, I want him to be the best possible police chief, because I'm going to him to look for that experience in leading that department, right? So I want a quality guy. So I hire people that are smarter than me in these specific areas that they're going to be working in. And then I have to rely on their judgment and their character to make sure that I can make good decisions, because I'm going to count on them just as you're going to count on me to make good decisions, right? So that's an important part of building my team. I expect the best. I don't pick people for political reasons. I pick people because I expect them to be the best at what they're doing.
Counselor Vecchione.
Like most municipalities, money is tight. What is your experience, what in your experience provides evidence that you can play a leadership role in a financial planning process? Plus, we need new businesses, plus we have an industrial park, and we don't, haven't done anything with it.
Okay. First of all, I've passed numerous budgets, and I'll give you an example. The two budgets that I passed in Hanson, both that passed unanimously without changes from our board of selectmen. So I've never had a real problem in terms of passing a budget, because I make sure that I have a logical reasoning for everything I do and that I set reasonable priorities. So I'm very strong at developing a budget, working with my department heads to make sure that budget... The goal of that budget to me is to provide the best quality resources I can at a price that citizens can afford, right? I don't want to undertax or overtax people. I want to tax people according to the needs of the community, right? So I need to make sure that it's something that when we bring it to, in this case, I believe, a public haring, that people can support what we're doing, and I can get up in a microphone and be very comfortable talking about my priorities and why I funded what I funded. And I need them to, if it's a tax increase, it's going to take to do that within 2.5, I need them to understand why and what it is. Otherwise, they're not going to support me. So budgeting is critical. I've done numerous budgets. It's never been a major problem. And again, I lean on my town accountant for the process part of it a lot, you know? I expect my town accountant to be very good and to understand that process and to make sure that we follow generally accepted accounting principles, right? I want to look at things like your OPEB benefits to see if we're, I'm sure we have, like everybody else, a big problem with OPEB in terms of it, right? So we need to develop a plan for that. There's a lot of issues. I mean, we could talk a lot about budgets. The second part of it, though, is the key to this community, in my opinion, and I, listen, I've studied this community a lot, is economic development growth. What makes this community exciting is its potential as it relates to economic development. You can't do anything with an industrial park unless you put it on the market. I'm not sure if you've got a top-notch realtor marketing that place, or if you have a subdivision plan of what you have for that. But you can't, you know, in my community, when I went to our industrial park, I was amazed that the town owned all this property, but we had not got a realtor to market the property, right? Why was that? I don't understand. How do you sell something if it's sitting there with no realtor, nobody out there pitching the property? So I'm not sure if you have anybody trained to sell that town-owned property, putting it on, you know, the state list for making sure that people know it's available, but we need to market that property. We may have to do a subdivision. I may have to work with our town planners to figure out what a subdivision looks like up there. I don't know if you've done that already. So we need to know how we can best utilize that land, what land use restrictions or land use issues are there, and then how we're going to market that property to sell it. So to me, that's probably one of the biggest advantages you have. My town had it, Hanson does not have it. We got a lot of wetlands. It's hard to build something if all your property is wet. You guys have huge potential in terms of economic development that communities would scream for. You have sewers, you have water, you've got land. I mean, you got a lot of good things to build from. That convention center is a beautiful asset for companies to be able to utilize if they want to bring in people for conventions or whatever they want to do. So we've got to market the benefits of the town, the infrastructure of the town, and how a business can benefit from that. And then we've got to work with the state to find out what tax credits, what other programs they have, that might, they might be able to help us in terms of giving some tax benefits for growth. Now, I want to be really critical on one issue. It goes to, you dance with the person who brought you, right? The first order of business is, working with the businesses that are here, you will find, and most people make the mistake of running out and trying to find new businesses right away. The first thing you need to do is shore up your own businesses, your relationship with your current business community, make sure that sound, and look at opportunities for them to grow. You know, if you have a business in town that's been invested here, they may want to build, you know, an extension to their building, or they might want to buy new land because they've outgrown it. That's your first order of business. If you know what businesses need, your existing businesses, you'll get more growth out of existing businesses in some cases than you will new businesses, right? And your best salespeople for new businesses are your old businesses, right? If the new, if the old business in town, they like me, they trust me, they think we're working for the businesses, they will help pitch to other people to come into our community. And the reason they do that is they want lower taxes, too, and the more growth we get, the lower their business taxes and property taxes are going to be, right? So the first order of business is work with the people who brought you to the dance, the people who've been loyal to this town for many, many years, and then use them as a tool to build off of that and then market what available real estate we have.
That's a very intelligent answer. Also, you're a very good teacher. You could teach us a lot, so thank you very much.
Been doing this for a long time. I enjoy it, and you're very welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Vandal.
What has been the most difficult situation you've faced in your professional career, and how did you handle the situation?
Most difficult? Listen, in our career, there's a lot of difficult situations. I mean, that's just the truth. We deal in a tough business, and we make decisions that are painful sometimes. Sometimes making the right decision is not popular. Bringing and paying through in Hanson was not popular. People weren't like, hey, I want to pay extra for bags. That wasn't something they were excited about. But you have to explain to them why you're making the decision you're making to, what the long-term benefit to that program was. So I spent a lot of time on public access TV, talking about the program. We did press releases of what it was about. I talked about it at selectmen's meeting. We had a public haring to talk about it. We had a, at the first Hanson Day, I had a table set up with all the information about it. I needed to, people, maybe they didn't like what we were going to do, but they understood why we were doing it. They understood that tipping fees were going to be increased radically, that we had a problem and we needed a solution. So we needed to get community buy-in to the solution, and not everybody bought in. Now, as the program developed and they learned more and they felt comfortable, and it wasn't the end of the world, they bought in more and more, and at the end of the day, the program was extremely successful. And we recently got a reward from the South Shore Recycling Committee, I think it's called the South Shore Recycling, I think it's committee. We got an award for reducing trash by more than any other town in the, in the South Shore. It was also exciting today, I met with the South Shore Recycling Group, and they told me that in terms of our negotiating a new tipping fee, our contract ran up. We were paying $34.50 a ton to get rid of trash. Now, you guys don't have to deal with that right now, but for other communities, that's an unbelievable low price to get rid of your trash. That contract, that 10-year contract, came to an end. Towns were negotiating with both CMAS and with a company called New Bedford Waste for reduced tipping fees. And the tipping fees, everybody was expecting $70 a ton, $80 a ton. I ended up negotiating a contract for $55 a ton, and they take away single-stream recyclables for free for three years. So 10-year contract at 55 and free recyclables for three years. Well, that turns out, I found out today, that that's the best contract in the South Shore. That most, the closest to us is $60 a ton, most are over $70 a ton, and almost everybody pays to have the recyclable takeaway where ours are free. So it started off not very popular. We got some people to buy in, but now, we went from massive complaints in the beginning to no complaints and a lot of happy people who immediately went to curbside collection, who are now coming back to the transfer station. So it's fun to see something so controversial come back and work. So that was one of the more recent controversial things that ended up being a success.
Thank you. Which of these two quotes do you agree with more? The first is from Thomas Jefferson, "Delay is preferable to error." And the second is from William Shakespeare, "Differ no time; delays have dangerous ends."
Shakespeare. Well, it's pretty easy. Listen, we need to do things, and we are going to make some mistakes, folks. If you think we're not, we shouldn't be doing this, right? To do the important things we have to do, to make changes, we're going to make some mistakes. But unless we take action, we're not going to do anything. And you'll find that a lot of the time, we come up with plans, and we got these great plans, and they sit on the shelf and nothing happens, right? Delay and delay and delay and delay, you know, you never, at some point, you're never going to get a perfect plan. So you have to institute something. You have to be creative, you have to move forward. So you develop a good plan, and you know what? Maybe something doesn't work. Well, then you change it, and you make it work. You find another solution. So you build. The first plan's not always the last plan, right? Things grow and change. I'm what they call a professional project manager. It's a certification called a PMP, Project Management Professional. One of the things that we talk a lot about is we have to develop our plan and what our goals and objectives are, and then put out the detailed tasks that go with them. But once you develop the plan, it's not over from there. That plan doesn't stay stagnant forever. You have to alter that plan as you're going through the plan to make sure that it works. And if it doesn't work, you need to change the plan. That doesn't mean every part of it has to change, but some pieces of it have to change. So I think it, you know, I would say to you, Sean, I'm a doer. You know, as I said, what scared my community is that I had all these things going on, and they're like, oh, my God, you're doing too much at once. But you know what? They don't think that anymore, because all of those plans at different times became successful. It's not my job to do every piece of the plan. Now, I expect my team, I'm going to start a plan, and I expect another team, a group of employees, to finish that piece of the plan, and another group to do another piece of the plan. So, yeah, there's a lot of projects going on, but I'm not the only one in town. We've got to get groups to run with those plans, and I need to assign people, okay, this is the plan, this is your role, when are you going to have it completed? Well, I'm going to have it completed on July 25th. Okay, well, then I expect on July 25th, you're going to come and tell me that that's done. And you know what? I'm doing that, but in order to get my piece done, Julie has to do this piece. Well, then Julie has to have it done by June 25th. You know what I mean? You have to set your tasks with fixed times and deadlines, and people that are held accountable to that, and you can do a lot of things at once. So I'm not big on delay. If you're looking for a town manager who's going to kind of wait around to make decisions, that would not be me.
Thank you. We have time for one more question.
I will defer to Counselor Clements since I was part of the other interviews.
Well, I've asked enough. I think I will defer to Counselor Pellican.
Thank you, Counselor Clements. Our citizens expect their public officials to be available and accessible to them. How do you interact with citizens, and what concrete actions have you taken in your previous jobs to improve direct services and communication to citizens?
Okay. Well, first of all, I have an open-door policy, so you or anyone else has equal access to me. If you come in my office and my door is open, and I'm not in a meeting or something I can't get away from, you're going to meet me right then, okay? That's just the way I am. Particularly citizens, I want to be accessible to them if they have questions and problems, so they're going to find it easy to get ahold of me. My department heads routinely flow in and out of my office as they have problems, and that's good, because they don't have to wait a week to get an answer. They can come right in and talk to me. So I'm very accessible. As I said to you before, I'm also on public access, so I've done literally 16 shows on a host of different topics. I've even created a Facebook page. I've learned, that is not the greatest process in the world for some reasons, I can talk about another time, but a lot of outgoing messages from Facebook. Not, I find it's too debatable. People want to debate me for hours, and I don't have that kind of time to debate issues, so it's mostly an outgoing source of information for people. Particularly weather conditions and things in the winter are great. I can tell people about, you know, power being out, or roads being closed, or emergency management situations in seconds. I can access 1,000 people just by punching a couple of keys. I also let them know when meetings are going on and what important events are happening in town. So it's been a great tool for me in that respect. It wasn't, in the beginning, I struggled with it, because Facebook has its own issues to dealing with that. So my idea also is to get out in the public. I was kidding, we were talking a little bit before I walked in the room. You have a great hot dog man. Now, what does that mean? Well, right down the street from you, the day I came here to explore your town, there's a gentleman selling hot dogs down the street. Well, think of him as the bartender, because he knows everything about Hanson. I mean, he was a great guy. I spent an hour talking to him, and I did it for a reason. I knew that citizens all day long walk up to him. And to hear him talk with passion about his love for Hanson, and he could be a hot dog guy in another town over, but he comes here because he loves the community, and to hear him talk about the architecture in town, to hear him talk about the people that come up to his hot dog every stand, it was fun. I mean, we had a great time talking. And about, you know, half an hour in a conversation, I told him who he was, and he's like, oh, I hope you get the job. He was excited. I was disappointed when I came tonight and he wasn't there, because I wanted to go over and thank him and talk to him a little bit, because he knew everything. I mean, he talks to citizens all day long. I love talking. I went to the library tonight before I came here, and I talked to a lady who was making an Afghan. And she, you know, I was asking her again, I forgot the name of Southbridge Fest. So what was the name of that? You know, I want to talk about that. And she told me, and we were chatting, and she was doing Afghan for a fundraiser for the library, and she told me about the movies they have downstairs in the library, and she told me about the, you know, teaching Spanish and stuff downstairs. It was a great opportunity for me to learn from her about this community through her eyes. And that's what I like to do. I mean, by talking to people, I get all kinds of information. She was a great asset to me. Right before the meeting, I stopped over at your fire department and said hello to the guys, just to introduce myself. And we talked a little bit about the fire trucks, the position of the trucks. You have four shifts, you have three lieutenants and a captain on the different shifts. We talked about space needs, is in potential new fire truck. I mean, I do that because I need to learn, and I can't learn all that in my office. So you're going to see me out in the community, asking people questions and having casual conversations. That's how you learn about the town, and that's how you achieve goals, by knowing what the citizens want.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So for the last 45, 50 minutes, we've hit you with a lot of different questions, and so it's only fair for you to be able to respond in kind. And again, just in terms of the time considerations, I'd like to, again, just encourage counselors to try and, you know, certainly be open and honest, but brief if possible, if you have any questions.
Well, I guess I would look at, and some of that's been talked about here, there's different types of town managers, right? I could be a town manager, I can sit in my office and I can do all the paperwork, I can manage the staff and the employees. I need to know what you want. Do you want that community guy? Do you want the guy with passion on the community? Or do you want a manager who's just, you know, sort of autocratic and gets things done? There's managers like that, and they're all over the place, who are good paperwork guys, who can develop budgets, can study everything to the ninth degree. That's not, I mean, I can do that, but that's not me. What do you want? What kind of manager are you looking for? And, you know, what's your passion? I mean, what's the passion you have about this town? Because you guys are going to tell me, you guys are going to feed my passion. So I need to know what you love about this town, what your passion is, and what you're looking for in a manager.
Sure. We'll start with Counselor Steve's.
Well, I definitely want somebody who can bring the community together. You've been talking a lot about that, and that's a pretty good strength, I see. I'm a big concern, my big concern is having somebody who can tie what we're doing today to the long term, see where our future is going. You've brought up the master plan, that's a good thing. A lot of issues going on in there and a variety of other issues that I want to see our town address, and that I think we can only do it together. There's been some divisiveness that some of the other people have mentioned, and we need to fix that.
When you say contract, what do you, did you say, you want to say expand in some ways, but you want the contract?
No, no, no. No, we need to, no, bring the community together to solve these problems.
Well, I'll say this, I think, as I look at it, you know, I really think there's got to be tremendous effort of bringing the school committee and the town council together, and we need to have the community support our education system. I don't think it's a problem of money. I don't think it's a problem, at least from the facility. I thought the high school, middle school was beautiful. I was shocked that so many people are sending their kids out of town. I was like, this is a great facility. So the problem isn't the money, the problem isn't the facility, what is the problem? So we need to figure that out. I know there's a lot of instability there. So together, we've got to get rid of that instability, we've got to get stability, and we've got to have a long-term plan. It's not something you fix in days or months, it's going to take us some years to get that together. But to me, if you guys are facing a critical issue, that's the big one. Economic development's huge, too, but that's big, because if the people don't trust our school system, if they're not willing to send their kids to the school system, everything else falls off of that, you know? So we can do that together, and we will do that together.
Counselor Vecchione.
I agree with you that we all have to work together, and we're going to be like one
big team and that includes the school committee. We all have to work together. Uh, we have some differences, but I think if we have the right leader in place as a town manager, uh, you can help us bring it together. I'm not looking for you to do everything yourself. We have to be part of your team. School committee has to be part of your team. We all have to work together. But I like your stuff. I think you'd make a great town manager. Thank you.
And, and you know what? I don't want to do everything either. I need your help. Listen, I'm, I'm, I need your help. I need the people in the audience's help, I need the people who are watching the shows' help. I, I'm not the solution to all the problems. Let's, let's face it. I'm a leader, I can provide leadership, but unless the community buys into what we're doing and comes out and does the work, we ain't going to move. So I am looking forward to your help and your expertise and I will tag off what I think is each person's expertise. And I, I could guess what they are just from looking a little bit about what I learned about you from my review of the town. So I know you're a tax accountant, right? So, so I'm going to be asking you things on the financial side, right? I know that Reverend is probably a very big community leader, so I'm going to be looking at him on community issues, right? So I, I need you guys to tell me what your strengths are so that I can build off of those strengths and I can use them.
Councillor Vandal?
Um, I want a town manager who's going to move our town forward.
Who what?
I want a town manager that's going to move our, our town forward.
That's, that, that's a no-brainer. We can do that. I mean, that, that, listen, I, I don't, I wouldn't come here to move backwards, that's for sure. So we're going to do everything we can to move forward in a real positive direction. So we're, we're together on that one. That's an easy one.
Sure. Uh, for me, and, uh, I think you've hit most of these points. Uh, one is balancing the short and the long-term view. Uh, there are things we need to do now, but there are also things that we have to consider the indirect and, and unintended consequences down the road and balance that appropriately. Uh, we have a very diverse community, uh, in a number of ways, racially, economically, age-wise, and, and pretty much any other demographic category you can come up with. And, uh, we need to be, uh, more inclusive of the different demographics and the different types of people, uh, so that they feel more involved and part of this government, part of this town, part of this community. And then lastly, just, uh, somebody who can, can help rally the troops and, and bolster community spirit because much along what you've already stated, uh, you, it's really about having pride in, in being from town and, and wanting to stay here and feeling good about being from Southbridge.
Sean, I'll say this, diversity is a strength. So, so we need to build off of that strength. And the only way we're going to do that is by bringing people together. Things like what I talk about with Hanson Day or the Southbridge Fest, those are the things that bring different cultures together. We need to do more of that and we need to build off of that. It's hard to be racist if you know the guy next to you. And, and that's what we need to do. We need to have people in the same room talking and that will resolve some of that stuff there.
Councillor Carrasco?
Um, like councillor Moriarty has said, um, one of my biggest things is the unity of our strength, using our, like I said before, and, uh, our, our community is diverse, but I believe that there is strong, strong people. I think we, we have a great community, it's just a matter of uniting forces and getting to the place where we need to. Um, I'm a firm believer that there's got to be a level of respect across, um, all lines, uh, whether it's elected officials, whether it's our town manager, superintendent, school committee, that we have to raise the bar. Um, and, and another thing is, I, I'm looking for a town manager that's not going to be afraid to hold people accountable. That's going to look at department heads, look at town councillors, look at whoever and say, you know, "No, no, we, we're moving our town forward and you're either impeding the operation and you need to step up to the plate, or this is something that needs to change. Accountability has to happen."
I, I'll say this to that, I, I totally agree with you that you have to hold people accountable, um, and I do. I first like to try to save people, okay? If people are weak, I want to build their skills and see if I can save them. To me, that's as much about attitudes as anything else. If people are willing to work hard and to learn and to build, they're usually savable. The people who are not are people who have done things the same way for a hundred years, they don't want to change and they're not going to listen to anything, they've been doing it wrong or not strong. So those are the people that we'll struggle with, but we'll give them oppor, every opportunity to succeed before we make the decision to let them go. And Reverend, I'm going to be asking of you that I need you to bring me into the community. I need you to introduce me to develop, you know, to, to introduce me to your community, your friends. They need to know me. I'm going to need and lean on you for that part of it.
Thank you.
Councillor Collins?
It's kind of hard to, to get to this point where a lot of what's been said, I think a lot of us feel up here. Uh, previously, I've said that I want a strong manager. I, I want a manager who is going to, to take the reins and be the leader. He's going to manage the people internally and he's going to work with the community, obviously externally, the way that many have said. Um, my past experience here has seen numerous managers, been six years, councillor Vandal's the next longest here, and, uh, with seven, I think, under your belt now. And, um, you see things come and go and you, and you see managers start off strong, similar to you, you know, enthusiastic and strong, and then sometimes you see them wane and become a little short-sighted on, uh, the will of the council and not necessarily the work at hand. Um, I want to make sure the council, the, the manager that comes in can keep the, the lines separate and can understand that we are policymakers and you are manager, you are management and you can manage the people and the employees and, and take us to a new level in that respect. Obviously, I think the goal of everyone is, is, uh, to, uh, get economic development, get the school systems better, all those wonderful things that we talk about and we can only do that working together. But we can also only do that if one person or a few people's, uh, philosophy is not the only way to go. It has to be a joined effort and we have to work together at it. So I need a strong manager who's going to do that and to, to make sure that, and they're not afraid to stand up to that and make that point and remind us, you know, when that happens.
I'll say this, you've been in this business, government for upwards of twenty-five years. I haven't lost that enthusiasm yet. So I don't plan on doing it anytime soon. Frankly, the reason I'm in it is because I love the community aspect and the building aspect of this. My satisfaction is not from the power of being a town manager, okay? My satisfaction comes from seeing things built. I like to see, for instance, when I built the ice skating rink, I love to see the memories I've created for that grandparent and that kid on the ice skating rink. That's what I enjoy. I don't care so much about the power of the position. Uh, the, the relationship on the policy, day-to-day operations is a two-way street. I need town councilmen, be straight up and honest, I, I need you to not be involved in the day-to-day operations. I don't, I don't need department, I don't need councilmen who are telling my department heads what to do. That's a real problem when that happens because my department heads, they get panicky when they, when council, I don't realize the power they believe you possess and it really causes a lot of stress when, when councilmen are telling department heads what to do. So I totally respect the policy role of a council, I, I hope that I'll have that same respect on the day-to-day operation stuff. If you have a problem with something I'm doing day-to-day, tell me about it. And if you have a problem with my department heads, tell me about it and I, I will take care of what you need to be taken care of. And we'll discuss that issue and we'll come to a, a solution to that. And I really hope that as much as we can, we work through the chair, because I can't, can't do nine things at once and I can't, I can't always solve your problem because Sean might disagree with your problem, but we need to have some cohesiveness and, and I need to know where the group is going versus any particular selectman at the time. That, that makes it difficult, you know?
Yeah.
I don't want to get in the middle of wars between selectmen. Sean can do that and I can kind of work with the whole team as a whole, you know?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Councillor Strahd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sanangelo, I, I, I am the warrior. I, I am the warrior for minority, I'm the warrior for human rights, I'm the warrior for equity for, now, this town, forty-four-two percent Hispanic people, I mean Hispanic people. For me, it's an honor for representative for the city council. I need one town manager working with me strong for much more, more better housing, much better job. I need one town manager come, you know, good vision, the future. This is only my points. You're working together with me, you're working together for all.
This is, this is, again, that's sort of a no-brainer to me that, you know, in my opinion, we're all equal and we need to fight to take care of everybody. I, I don't care if you're wealthy or poor, you deserve fair discussion and we should be able to solve your problems, right? So just because you happen to have money doesn't really impress me a lot. Uh, I think that everybody should get a fair shake in life. Now, that also means that, you know, I expect people to, to carry their end of the bargain and work and do the things they need to succeed and, and we'll work together as a team to, to pick up people at the lower level.
Thank you. Councillor Manning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, what I'm looking for in a town manager is a town manager that has knowledge of the budget, has business management skills, knowledge of the mass general laws, knowledge and very familiar with our charter, our bylaws, a strong backbone, not afraid to stand up to people, hold people accountable like councillor Carrasco mentions. Um, community involvement, which you expressed, um, much throughout your interview tonight, and a town manager that understands that the council changes every year. The makeup of the town council changes every year. There's an election every year, so there could be new people up here every year, maybe they're not. The makeup of the chair and the vice chair changes every year, personalities change. I want a town manager that understands that as well.
Sometimes I wish it wouldn't, but yeah, you're, you're right. And you have to be flexible to deal with all of that, right? And most of that comes with experience, you know? Being in this business a long time, I'll be honest, when I first came in, I was very thin-skinned when I first came into this job and I would take criticism pretty harshly. Or I didn't know how to solve problems, but it takes a lot to get me upset these days because I've been through it all. I've had that experience now, so I'm pretty well-seasoned, so I can deal with different personalities that in the old days was more difficult to do. Um, I think a lot of that just comes with experience and I think that, that my twenty-five years of doing this is going to help a lot. And you said, I, I don't get too crazy by having somebody yell or get mad or be passionate about what they do. Uh, and the budget experience, I've done tremendous amount of budget work over the years, so I, I think I'll, I'll meet that need for you.
Thank you.
Councillor Buggler?
Uh, thank you. I think since I'm going last, a lot of what I want has been covered already. And I'd just like to say I really agree with councillor Steve's and councillor Moriarty's points. We really need somebody who can be a bridge builder and bring, um, diverse groups of people within the community together. And also, we really need to do a lot of work right now to build a better working relationship between our town council and our school committee. Um, I'd also like to see somebody who is, um, going to work hard to help us implement the goals of our master planning process.
What's the master planning process?
Um, implement the goals of the master planning process. So I was happy to see that you've read through that document several times.
Start with those right bubbles. Hopefully, they haven't all been picked, but, I mean, we, we, we do need to look at the things that are quick and easy. Because as the report states, um, you need to build confidence that we're moving, so people need to see activity and they buy into the bigger goals. So, um, those were the quick, easy things. Hopefully, we've done some of those, but I hope there's a few left that we can do so they can see immediate progress.
Thank you.
And at this point, uh, certainly you're welcome to make any closing remarks you may have.
Well, first, let me thank you all for giving me this opportunity. I get it, when I first looked at Southbridge, I had no idea. Um, and I wanted to learn about it. So I spent, as you can see, a great deal of time learning about Southbridge. So I had an opportunity to go all through the town, to tour your school system, to, to look at the, uh, the optical facility, to walk through the convention center, to talk to your firemen, uh, to, to look at your community. And I got to tell you, every day, I got more and more excited. Uh, this is my hometown. I'm sorry, it, in a lot of ways, it's the same thing what I grew up with. So I'm very familiar with your issues because I lived in my whole life, watching thousands of people come out from the factories to, you know, electrify your downtown and then watching that disappear. I'll say this, one of the things that is most exciting to me is we need to let people know and remember that there's a future here. People have to be excited about the town, they have to believe in, in Southbridge. We need to make them believe. We need to make them believe that things aren't going to stay stagnant, that we can make changes and they need to see those changes. And we got to get them back to believe of what the greatness of Southbridge was and it still is. So that, that's important, that we, we build on that and get the public to buy in that this is not just another management change and it's the same old thing we've seen, right? We got to be something different. Now, I'm going to ask the board and be clear that we're going to make some mistakes. Things are not always going to work out perfectly, but I'm asking you to work with me to grow and build and, and to take some challenges, to make some tough decisions and, and to, you're not going to move the town forward unless we make some tough decisions and do it. So I'm looking for your support to do that, if you're, if I'm fortunate enough to be chosen. Uh, and we'll have some fun. We, you know, this is hard work, but there's no reason to do it if you, you can't have fun in this community and enjoy what we do. So I'll be looking to, to create some activities that we can enjoy and we can be involved in. So I thank you, uh, I'd be honored to be chosen and I know you have a difficult decision. I, I want to lastly end by also congratulating the other candidates that came before me. Uh, they made it to this level and this is tough competition at this level. Uh, they have my respect. Uh, I know a lot of town managers all throughout the area and, uh, they deserve a tremendous amount of recognition for, for getting to this level as well.
I believe councillor Vecchione has a question of clarification.
Yeah. Uh, you made a comment.
Mm-hmm.
That you were going to rely on the chair to help communicate with all the councillors.
Rely on who?
Rely on whoever the chairman is to communicate with all the councillors.
To help with that process, right?
Yeah. But we're all equal up here and we appreciate an open door policy to all of us and we're treated just as equal to whoever the chairman's going to be.
Right.
And if I had a question, I want to come in and talk to you about it.
Oh, that's fine.
And, and, um, if there's a problem with the town, the whole nine of us should be notified, either by cellphone or something that, whatever's going on. That's all, we're all equal.
And I agree with you. What I'm saying to you is that if you tell me that you want something specifically done that may be debatable among council members, I just can't run out and do it, okay? I need to have some cohesiveness. You may want that done and Sean may not. And, and we have to talk about that stuff and come to a cohesiveness. I can't work for nine different bosses individually, so I need to have some communication among us and Sean becomes part of the focal point for that. Now, you're right, every selectman is important and has the same power, but in my understanding of the role, the chairman kind of brings that together and ha, and helps with that communication. So, you know, a lot of what we do will be feeding information back and forth to, to Sean and Sean feeds, helps me feed that to you guys. But that doesn't mean you can't walk in my office and talk about issues. That's not at all what I'm saying.
What if I want something from you? That I want some records or something?
If you want a what?
Some records, I need some records.
Oh, that's easy though. That's not, that's not an issue, that's information. You guys can come to me with information all you want and you're going to get the information. Uh, it's more of, I can't take a direct order to do some issue kind of related thing from one selectman. It's got to, you know, your power rests in, in the majority, not in an individual. So, so all the information, please come to me if you're looking for information, you'll get it immediately or as quickly as we can put it together for you. Come to me with your suggestions, come to me with your ideas. All I'm saying, if it's a policy decision in the end.
I understand.
That's got to be something different.
But if there's, there's a problem in town, like a fire or something, we all like to be notified.
Yep.
This guy we just have now, Kevin Pecos, he notifies all of us when there's something.
Well, there's, there's a lot of ways we can do that and I find that different councilmen like information different ways. For instance, I have some councilmen in my town who don't use the internet, don't use email at all, right? So that particular selectman comes into my office on a daily basis and we talk, so that's my communication with them. Others, because they're working during the day, like information through email in some quick way. So I don't know each of your needs yet, but I will, and we will provide that information to you as I need to. Now, if each of you want a phone call every day, that, that's a little bit different, right? So we'll work out that communication depending upon what your need is versus what somebody else's need is. I mean, some people don't want me to call during the day, they're working and, and they can't be disturbed at work. I mean, so it depends how we do it.
I think what we mean is, whatever's going on in town, we all like to be notified.
I agree.
It wouldn't just be you and the, and the chairman.
No, the chairman, frankly, the chairman will also be helping me spread that information. So I would be in this case asking Sean if I needed his help to communicate with you as well. So I'm not the only source of communication. Part of the chair's role is to provide information as well. So that will be a joint effort between us.
Thank you.
And again, it depends upon the situation.
No, I understand.
So I'm not sure what the situation is, but it will be a joint role. But the chair plays a big role in that.
We're all treated equal, that's all.
A, a hundred percent agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, just, uh, thank you, Mr. Sanangelo, for, for coming in and, and spending this time with us. And, uh, obviously, certainly, the council will deliberate and as soon as the council's made their decision, you and, and the others will all be notified and I'll wish the best of luck to all of you.
Terrific. And thank you, everybody, I appreciate your time.
So at this point, uh, we have concluded each of the three interviews of the finalists. Uh, and at this point, uh, we would have the fifth agenda items to discuss, the discussion of the town manager appointment. Uh, I do not know how many, how many councillors, if, if any, actively engaged in terms of the evaluation forms. Um, so I don't know how relevant that may or may not be. Councillor Manning?
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, I would recommend, or I'd like to make, make a motion for a recess. Mr. Chair, I would recommend, or I'd like to make a motion for a recess. So, I took a lot of notes, and I'd just like to go through my evaluation form.
Why can't you?
I took, I would like a recess. I took a lot of notes, and I would like to go, I listened, and I took a lot of notes, and I would like to go and mark my evaluation forms.
Right, and I fully intend to call for so. I just wanted to see whether or not it's something that everybody is actually partaking in, or if there's been a change in mindset of the council as a whole. That's all. I just wanted to make sure, process-wise, that we're all aligned. Counselor Clemens?
I do have a question, though. You know, when we received this information and going over the evaluations, it's my understanding there were 22 applicants. Were there not any with more long-term experience than what we were given here this evening? Because frankly, we were given some very 20-years experience, but that was not in as actual town manager or town administrator. Others were, I think, with, you know, the mayor's been a mayor, not a town administrator or manager. And Mr. Embry, he pretty much was the only one with fairly consistent managerial, municipal managerial experience. So, I guess I'm wondering, my understanding also is you interviewed seven?
Mm-hmm.
And you brought forth three.
It was four were offered, one has withdrawn.
Okay. I know in past, things were done a little bit different, not that that was always the correct way either. I know that one of the things that was interesting I learned was that previously, the candidates actually were, I don't know if you called it interviewed, but were talked to, the finalists were talked to, they were able to talk to the department heads and such, and that was, they were able to weigh in a bit, which was interesting. And there were five candidates, I believe, the last time brought forth for interviews. So, I guess I'm just curious, was there long-term experience that we did not get to evaluate on more of the same level? This is very broad. It's almost, the three are quite unique in different ways, so it's a little bit more difficult to, you know, this is the most important decision we're going to make here. In my six years, I think this is one of the most important decisions for me personally. It just, yeah, I had a little trouble with when I looked at the resumes. I mean, I liked the interviews. I think we got a lot of information out of it, and it helped immensely compared to what, how I felt when I originally looked at the resumes. I feel better, but still, I question the type of candidates that we were not, that you were able to interview and form an opinion that we were not able to formulate as the rest of us council.
Sure. So, the search that was, this most recent of searches was done in accordance to the town charter in terms of makeup and purview. It was also done under the direction and in accordance of the guidelines of the Collins Center, which has concluded a number of successful searches. To my recollection, and Esteban or one of the other search members may recall better than I, but of the dozens of searches that they've done, there was only, my recollection that they said there was only one that was, you know, by their measures of success, not a success. So, we followed more or less the industry standard as an industry leader presented them there without being able to because of confidentiality of the applicants, especially for those who are currently gainfully employed and apply in confidence. In terms of other candidates, we're limited in what we can say, but I can say there were people with more experience, per se. However, the search committee, I think, was quite decisive in terms of which candidates were brought forth. I don't believe that any of those who were not brought forth were kind of just narrowly missing it. Those who were brought forth were brought forth with solid recommendations, and those who were not brought forth for any given reason of each individual member and how they voted, it was, there were not, there were not very many that were, I don't believe there were any, that were kind of on the cusp that narrowly missed it. And at this past Monday night's meeting to formally and publicly vote on the finalists, knowing that one of those that desired had been withdrawn, I even made, I made the point of asking if the search committee was interested in entertaining the invitation of another semifinalist to become a finalist, and unanimously, the decision was not to do so. That the candidates that we, that the search committee has brought forward are easily the best candidates in the pool for various different reasons, and I would only note that experienced is not, alone is not the measurement. I think it's quality of years and quality of service over quantity of years, I think, is something that those involved had very much so focused on. And just as a note, of the citizen members, the majority of that committee, all of those three individuals are veterans of HR experience and have hired very many people and are quite qualified in their process. And the search firm, their liaison, for lack of a better term, was quite, I'm sorry?
Mary had 20-plus years in HR.
Right. Mary Carty from the Collins Center has over 20 years, most of which is in municipal government of HR experience, and in their estimation, they thought that the search committee did quite well. They did not, they would not guide the committee in terms of which candidates they thought were good or bad necessarily. They would disclose anything that they felt they needed to disclose legally, but after the fact, more or less gave a thumbs up and credited and lauded the work of the search committee.
And I appreciate that explanation. I still personally feel that you had brought in seven, and for us to then only have been able to really look at three just seemed a very small pool in which to do so. That's all. Just, I'm a bit concerned on that.
Sure. I would also just-
I would have liked to have, I mean, you brought in seven.
Mm-hmm. I would also just note that-
Which were qualified because the Collins Center had brought those out of the 22. They recommended those seven.
Mm-hmm.
So, it would have been nice to have seen just a little bit more.
Sure. And I will only also note that, one, and our interim town manager has raised this issue, the prior firm raised the issue, as has the current firm, that there are certain legalities in terms of being done to full council, in terms of what becomes public at that point, which was one of the major stumbling blocks or barriers, again, in terms of the confidentiality of the candidates, and that the last town manager search, while it may have had several candidates brought forth to some other round, ultimately, on the, when it came down to it, to the full council in this very room, there was one candidate left standing as an option, which kind of put the council in a position for better or worse of choosing or not. And then, just lastly, for whatever it's worth, to my knowledge and my understanding, and some of it may have changed based on hirings and so forth, but each of our finalists are finalists and/or semifinalists in multiple communities, some of those communities being ones that the average person would probably think are much more lucrative or promising or pleasant positions, several on the Cape as an example. And with that, I have Counselor Estrada, and then Counselor Vecchia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, end the process. So, the interview?
Can we end the process?
Tonight?
As far, so, do we end the process? As far as the interviews, barring council throwing a curveball, the agenda item is a discussion of town manager appointment. If the council is ready to proceed in making such an appointment, that we can do so. And after that, again, as a provisional agenda item, is to go into executive session for the point of basically setting negotiation terms for a contract with whomever might be appointed. And as far as just procedure from this point, until, you know, Counselor Manah and several others, I'm sure, including myself, would like to be able to obviously sit down for a few minutes and go over the notes and reflect briefly. But, so, until that part is done, I wouldn't entertain any motions in terms of making the appointment. I think that part needs to be evaluated, let everybody kind of think about it for a few minutes, and if anybody has any questions, comments, and so forth, go forward. And once everybody's had an opportunity to speak, then if somebody is so engaged or so inclined, we may proceed at that point, if that answers your question.
I'm all ready. I'm waiting to vote tonight.
Okay. Counselor Vecchia?
Well, to begin with, I prefer not to vote tonight. And I think he just said he isn't, I just said, he, they both feel the same way I do, so I don't know what, the three of us, because he just said the same thing I did. None of us are prepared to vote tonight. But my question is this, I don't know if I'll vote tonight or not. How many votes does a person need? Six votes?
A simple majority, five.
So, that means it might be five to four, and that person would get in.
It might.
All right. So, what I'm just saying, you, I'm not talking to you, but you just said that. He doesn't want to vote tonight. I don't want to vote tonight. He doesn't, you said that to me too, right? Yeah, I don't-
Yes, I did. All right. We will, I understand what you're saying, but that's not where we are at, at the moment.
Okay, all right, okay.
Any other questions, comments before we take a break? Again, just to go over your material, we have, it is 8:52, it appears to be, so we'll recess till 9:00 PM. Thank you. So, at this point, again, I've heard different things about the evaluation form. I don't know how married everybody is to it and how people did so. So, I guess, at this point, people have had a chance to look around it, and I'm not going to ask for names, but I would like to see just if anybody has a clear preference at this point, and I'll just go around through everybody. Counselor Steves, it's basically a yes or no.
I'm torn between two.
Okay, thank you. Counselor?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm all set to vote today.
Yes.
Yes, I'm going to vote today.
Yes.
Yeah, I think I can vote.
And I'm, personally, I'm quite confident in my own thought process. So, with that, is there, would anybody like to make a motion? Let me grab, just briefly. Any motion as far as appointments?
I'll make that motion.
I just wanted to, trying to find the right document that had really kind of the appropriate wording for said motion. And obviously, I've got a thousand papers over here from this evening. You would have think-
It's from the one I would have gone.
I believe it was in the Collins-
Do you all have it? And we've all lost it briefly. Is it on this?
Right. So, the wording proposed by the Collins Center would be along the lines of to make an offer of employment as town manager to the candidate, subject to the negotiation of a mutually agreeable employment contract. So, at this point, if anybody has a motion, you may proceed. Sure.
Would we not be originally doing something like we do with the chair position and asking each name, and then that would be the one, then we would make the vote to offer that position? You know, in other words, pony up your name-
In terms of, right.
And then, once you have a name by majority vote-
I'm more than happy to do so, absolutely.
And insert the name, because it would seem, if you say it twi-
Right, yeah. So, that's something that I talked to the interim manager about, and that is one of the thought processes I had, was along the lines of similar to how we do the chairmanship, if there are nominations, there may only be one nominee, which makes it quite easy, but if there are multiple nominees, then instead of a yes or no vote, it would simply be last name, last name, last name, and so forth.
Right. So, then the motion might be, a motion to express your nominee for town manager?
I will, I would take nominations.
Motion to accept nomination?
A motion for nominees for the town manager appointment.
So, I make that motion?
Second.
Okay, so now, we are open for any nomi, I'm sorry. Any discussion on the motion itself, we'll make, we'll vote on that motion.
I'm just-
What we would do, Counselor Vecia, is assuming that this motion was to pass, we would then open the floor to the full council to choose any one of those three and make them as a nomination.
Okay. And the fairway would be alphabetically?
No, I would, it would go by, by roll call, as we do, when we do the reorg every year.
Roll call is alphabetically.
Usually, but it rotates, yeah.
Well, I don't know what he has over there.
Right, no, it'll be fine. He has the roll call sheets. Are there any other questions or clarification on going forward in that manner?
You could do it by short hands.
Well, yeah, we can.
You could say this nominee, then.
Well, I think, I just prefer for the importance of this sort of a vote.
Right.
So, unless there was any other discussion on that part of it, roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Peliquin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecia?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. At this point, we would now be open to nominations. Counselor Estrada?
I'm making a motion for Mr. Ron Sanangelo.
Okay, so we have a motion for Ron Sanangelo. Do we have any others? Counselor Manah?
I make a motion for Mr. Daniel Napik, if I pronounced his name correctly. If I didn't, I apologize.
Daniel who?
Mr. Napik.
I didn't hear you. Okay.
Do we have any others? Yeah.
Well, let's put them all on the nomination, just-
Sure. Do you, would you like to nominate, Mr. Embry?
Yes.
Okay. So, at this point, all three are nominees, so when we take the roll call vote, you would simply state the last name of the candidate you so prefer. Is there any questions or discussion at this point? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco?
Sanangelo.
Counselor Clemens?
Sanangelo.
Counselor Estrada?
Sanangelo.
Counselor Manah?
I'm Napik.
Counselor Moriarty?
Sanangelo.
Counselor Peliquin?
Sanangelo.
Counselor Steves?
Sanangelo.
Counselor Vandal?
Vandal.
Counselor Vecia?
Sanangelo.
One for Napik, eight for Sanangelo.
Thank you. So, we will, we will reach out to each of the candidates and let them know, keep them apprised. At this point, we would, I will entertain a motion to, well, agenda number six, is to vote to enter into executive session according to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23B, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and vote to adjourn. We'll discuss after we have-
I think we should make the motion now.
To insert the name.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm just getting ahead of myself.
Put my paper away then.
So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to make an offer of employment as town manager to Ronald Sanangelo, subject to the negotiation of a mutually agreeable employment contract. So moved. Second. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Peliquin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. You had given us some information for a possible motion on the, for Mr. Pecos?
Oh, you're right. Just before, yes. So, just before tonight's meeting, thank you for that.
Are you talking about the memo?
You're welcome.
Right. So, just before tonight's meeting, we received a memo from the acting town manager, the interim town manager, rather, and at this point, I would entertain, well, I will, I'll just first briefly summarize, especially for the general public, and why this is coming up tonight versus the town council meeting scheduled for June 15. As people may or may not be aware, our current interim town manager, Mr. Pecos, is here on an interim basis and is doing so along the lines with his retirement package, which puts restrictions in terms of the hours he may work over the course of a calendar year, fiscal year, calendar year, as well as how much he may earn. He will be reaching his spending cap on June 13, and on June 13th, he will have worked 960 hours for the current year and will have been paid $62,400, which is $2,412 less than the maximum he is allowed to pay, to be paid, rather. However, just based on the way the laws work and the timeframe, we would have to essentially vote to approve the payment of an additional $2,412 in compensation for the interim town manager's final week of work for the town. When I say final week, however, he is not leaving as of June 13th or the week after. The town manager, the interim town manager, is going to be staying here until the next permanent town manager is in place. However, that timeframe would be volunteer work, essentially. However, so, just based on this, he is just looking to get that final $2,400 that he is essentially entitled to, but based on the way the laws work, is kind of restricted from getting, and I think, personally anyways, I think that $2,400 for seven, eight, nine, whoever, however many weeks, is a pretty decent bargain, especially when you do it hourly. So, at this point, if anybody is so inclined, I would entertain a motion to approve payment of an additional $2,412 in compensation for the interim town manager's last week of work for the town.
So moved.
Second.
And as you may or may not see in the memo, this has gone through legal counsel, who has approved the language on this as well, to make sure it's legal and legitimate and proper. Are there any questions or comments or concerns on this motion? Counselor Steves?
I have no concern about the motion itself, but my concern is, how does this, how does this mesh with open meeting law?
This would be, this is unforeseen. Additionally, because that cap takes effect a few days before our next meeting-
Yeah, I get that.
-there are legal issues in terms of, basically, in talking to him and hearing about what Attorney Caprera, as legal counsel, had opined, doing this retroactively was really not much of an option. It could be easily contested and become problematic. So, that is why. Also?
Doesn't really answer the question about open meeting law, though.
It is, this is unforeseen, so it's not something that we were expecting.
Yeah, I know that.
And based on the timeframe, because we do not have another council meeting prior to this, you could, it would be, according to Attorney Caprera, it is legitimate in terms of being a special emergency type of situation.
Okay.
It's not lives at stake, but it's livelihood at stake, I guess. Any other questions or comments or concerns? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Meana?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemmons?
Yes.[1714.33]